All right, welcome everyone to I call the June 25th, 2020 Special City Council for the City of Bothell to order. So before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote, remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended until July 1st. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk's office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes that disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone in callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided advanced notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. Emails are encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. So at this point, we will take a moment to call roll, to take roll call of the council members by position on the Webex call. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Oh, boy.
I think we lost her.
Here. Oh, no, my mouse and thing was, was naughty, but I'm here.
Okay, Councilmember Thompson.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dour.
Here.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Present, thank you.
All right, in addition, the following city staff are in attendance. City manager Jennifer Phillips, city attorney Paul Byrne, city clerk Laura Hathaway, finance director Chris Bothwell, community development director Mike Katterman, parks director Nick Stroop, public works director Aaron Leinhardt. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently, mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. So if you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up the yellow speaker cards in the lower portion of your screen. I will call on you as I see them. This will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Finally, please, please mute your microphone when not speaking. All right, the first time, first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. However, because this is a special meeting, no items, no new items may be added. Council may identify agenda items to be continued or withdrawn. So on to our next item, visitor comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written, written comments submitted to the city clerk, city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. City clerk, do we have any visitor comments?
We do, thank you. We received a written comment from James Dooley regarding reallocation of the police operations budget. This comment will be made part of the record for anybody who wishes to see it. Thank you. It was also forwarded to all council members earlier today.
We have the, our next item is the council appointment to North King County Shelter Task Force. So we have a, had a email with the letter that was sent around. I hope you are all able to review it. So is there any city council member that is interested? Councilmember Thompson?
Yes, Mayor, I actually spoke with one of the other members on the board about this. And I had mentioned I would be willing to do that unless somebody else wants to do it and either have that conversation.
Councilmember McNeil. Did you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd sent you a, a letter saying my interest, but Councilmember Thompson would love to do it, love to see him do it, represent City Bothell.
All right, if no one else has anything, I'll accept a motion for an appointment to this task force.
Can I, can I do that if it's me? I move, we appoint me to this task force. And Councilmember McNeil, thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to appoint Councilmember Mason Thompson to the North King County Shelter Task Force and a second by Deputy Mayor Zornz. Any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. City clerk?
State your name when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Councilmember, or Mayor Olson, sorry about that, Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dour.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Pass the seven zero, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thompson. I will send an email notifying them of your appointment to this position and I'll CC you so they have your contact information. All right, on to our next item, consideration of Main Street 101st Avenue Northeast closure to vehicle traffic for public street and private property uses in response to COVID-19. City manager? No?
I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have and Director Lenhart is here as well. This item was added by the city council vote on Tuesday and it's at your direction that we're seeking to know what to do next. So I don't, didn't, didn't have time to prepare any materials, there wasn't the opportunity, so we're here to answer questions.
Councilmember Agnew?
City manager, did the police and fire department, did they have anything to say about it and what did they say?
Um, yes, we incurred with both the police and fire departments. Wouldn't be their favorite to close 101st, it isn't access for them to get to 522. So they are concerned about response times. However, it is the will of the council, then they will figure out alternative routes and we'll, we'll make it work.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Um, I also have a concern about response times and if we were to move and close 101st, I think it would come with the caveat that if it affects response times, it gets pulled up. I also called the strip mall that has Julio's and Main Street Hair and asked about if it was extend down Main Street, what their concerns were. And that driveway onto Main Street should not be blocked at all. There's a, it's a major delivery area, delivery trucks cannot back out, they can't do a U-turn. That, that driveway out onto Main Street is their exit and there's beer trucks, paint trucks, UPS, flower delivery to the Donut House. So I know that there's been a lot of requests to go down Main Street as for, as far as Hillcrest Bakery and I think it should stop at Parker Paints. So that, that's how I would weigh in on this. I don't know how the rest of you feel about it.
City manager, if we don't give specific direction, I assume the city staff will review the options and see what works best for the businesses and.
Yes, we'd be happy to do that. We, we've assessed the, the street closures. We've talked to many businesses, not all businesses. I think also to keep in mind access to the gravel lot that the city owns, we refer to it as EFNG where the Baskin Robbins is. That is for public parking, so, and accessibility for the Hillcrest Bakery, they have a delivery van. So not blocking off both of those accesses would also be important. So in, in support of what Deputy Mayor Zornz said, accessibility for those businesses is very important. And that is a very tricky parking lot. We close that once a year when we do this, the Safe Halloween. And it's very, very important that if that were to be closed, that it's, that it's extremely well marked and blocked so that no one can go around it and by accident or by malicious behavior get around and get into a pedestrian zone. There is no turnaround, so the way the parking slots work, they go all the way to the, the exit. And so there isn't, it would, it would be challenging for people, then they'd have to back out or find a vacant space and be able to turn around. So we've assessed those things as well. The Main Street of 101st, the parking, that's about 16.
Speaker's muted.
City manager, hold on.
The whole time I've been talking and
Oh, just the
No, no.
Just the last second?
Yeah.
Gremlin came?
Or something, yeah.
Okay. The, the closure on 101st from Main Street to 183rd, that would also eliminate parking. So there's about 16 or 18 parking stalls there. And so we want to make sure that the businesses understand that they would lose that parking to close that portion of 101st. So we would absolutely do additional outreach and have that discussion with the businesses. So we make sure that it works for, for the downtown businesses, if that's the direction of the council.
Thank you. Councilmember McCullough?
Yes, so I realize this is a very difficult decision because if we close 101st and the cars come up to the parking area, which they would need to do, they're going to drive through the parking area, that's a very difficult decision. Um, that's a tough one for me because we all use 101st to go around today. So let me just say, I, I believe I support going down to Hillcrest Bakery and that block. I think that would work, but I'm really concerned about closing 101st. Yeah.
Councilmember Dour?
Thank you, Mayor. I think what Deputy Mayor Zornz said makes a lot of sense to me to close Main Street down to Parker Paints so that there's still access to the, the plaza. And I fully support closing 101st. I think Hop and Hound, I, I think we got about 100 emails for Hop and Hound and I could see maybe potentially having picnic tables, public, or you know, shared picnic tables so people could get takeout and eat maybe in that intersection. And, and having it closed all the way up to the next block, so encompassing the block that has the teriyaki on it. I'd love to deploy more tables so people could get takeout and have more communal space, so I think that would be great.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, um, City Manager Phillips, do you know when we talk response time with police and fire? You know, or where that's convenient for them, did we get an idea of like worst case scenario, how much time would add to a response? You're muted.
City man.
Sorry, I think that I would remember. So it's very difficult for them to say it depends on the time of day and many different factors. I think one of their major concerns was if something happened on, specifically on 522 between the closure and Bothell Way. That the ability to get to any incident that it would occur there as well as to some of the businesses then. So with just the closure of Main Street now, they can get in the back parking lots and, and have reasonable accessibility. As you start to close more, especially 180, 101st, that whole stretch, their ability to then get into some of those businesses for some sort of medical care or to be able to pull the truck up, it's, it's limiting. But, but actual time wise, that's a really difficult assessment to do.
Yeah, I would.
And we had two days to do it, so.
Yeah, and you didn't have anything else going on in those two days, did you? Um, yeah, I, I don't think I would want to close 101st past the access to the parking lots for all the businesses that are on that side of Main Street. Um, you know, I would want to stop it so people still had access to those lots and, you know, that's customers, that's, you know, police and fire, everybody. Um, and I mean, there aren't any businesses past that, so like there's no real good reason to. Um, you know, I, I also like Councilmember Dour mentioned, really like the idea of going up a block of 101st. Um, you know, that gives us a lot more space to safely spread out. Um, you know, other municipalities, Leavenworth has put out a bunch of tables in their, in their streets and it seems to be really popular from those that I see on social media of my friends that are going there. Um, and you know, the businesses that aren't directly affected by this, um, you know, I spoke with the cottage, I spoke with Julio's and they said they'd love to be able to have some extra seating that people can take, you know, get takeout and take it there. You know, some of those restaurants aren't close enough where they can easily serve, but we could do something for those that aren't right there also. Um, in terms of Main Street, um, on the block going down toward 527, you know, we heard from, um, you know, Asher or Ashler, we heard from Graham's Royalty and we heard from Revol. The, um, you know, two of those businesses would be served if we went down to Parker Paint. Um, you know, Graham's Royalty had a, I thought a really cool idea about doing these on Main Street. Um, you know, it's already at an angle where it's kind of like a theater, like that seems really neat to me. I'd, I'd love to see if we can get enough room to do that. Um, is the, is the issue with access, just that it creates an awkward space if that's closed? You have access to 183rd parking lot as well. City manager?
We haven't spoken to the businesses, that was what Deputy Mayor Zornz brought up, so you'd have to ask her, we haven't had the opportunity to have that discussion.
Okay. Um, I, I mean, you know, the amount of people that we heard from, both our constituents as well as the business community and almost, I mean, I almost completely in favor of it, it was kind of overwhelming. My email inbox has been full, you guys. But I think this is something that our community wants and obviously it comes at a logistical cost. I very much lean toward thinking it's worth it. You know, we did something that people think is pretty cool and they'd like to see more of it and so would I.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so when we refer to Parker Paints, are we, are we talking about the Sherwin-Williams Paint Store? Is that the, where we're referring to? And so the Sherwin-Williams has kind of a drive aisle that goes in, in, into the north off Main Street and then loops around to the east. But also continues straight to 183rd, so Deputy Mayor Zornz, I think, brought up that that is a through access for, to, for deliveries, is that what I thought I heard? Uh, so the, one of the questions I would have is if you were to, if you were to block off, if you were not to block off, if you had to block off at the intersection of 101st and Main Street west of there at the Sherwin-Williams store, basically would you be routing all the traffic through the Sherwin-Williams parking lot? Which is through the Country Donuts and Julio's and all that, is that, is, would the traffic be forced to go that direction?
Yes, it is. I mean, technically we would try to put signs up to say, you know, road closed ahead and discourage people from making the right. But even today, if people see it, because there's a little bit of a slope, so when they're making the right onto Main, they already see the road closure sign and they're making a U-turn right there already. So it's, it's already confusing for folks and causing a challenge. And I think you're already seeing an increase in traffic going through that parking lot. So if, yes, I think if you shut it off there, you'd end up with people making the left, either making the U-turn, which would actually be safer. It's, wouldn't be legal, but it would be safer because there's no oncoming traffic than it is today, but then also going through the parking lot.
And they're, to some degree, they're already doing that?
Yes.
Okay, so.
They don't realize, I don't think that they realize that the 101st is open. So they're seeing the, the detour sign and I, and I believe, it's not, it's not a huge number, but I believe I've had feedback that we think that's what it is.
Okay, and so would we just move, if we were going to block it off to the Sherwin-Williams, would we just move the ecology blocks? I think there's ecology blocks out there and the, and the road closed signs to the west, is that? How we doing, I see Director Leinhardt shaking her head, yes, okay. Um, so would, what would we do at 100, 101st and Main Street on the north side of Main Street?
Director Lenhart, would you like to describe what your plan is?
Uh, so the thought would be for 101st that we would put ecology blocks to the north of the driveways on 101st, just north of 522. And then we would put ecology blocks, as you mentioned, there by Sherwin-Williams. Um, and then ecology blocks at the driveway between Sherwin-Williams and the teriyaki place. And then ecology blocks at 183rd.
So you wouldn't
Signs, lots of signs. Probably put local access only signs and barricades down closer to five or town closer to Bothell Way to just indicate to people that there wasn't any through traffic. It, it won't stop everyone, but it'll stop a handful of people.
Okay, um, and the cost associated with doing that work, I, I'm not going to ask you the dollar amount. But obviously we've closed Main Street for a reason, to help our businesses. And if I'm, if memory serves, we're able to, we're able to get some funding from the CARES Act to hand, to take care of that. Would we be able to also get funding from the CARES Act to take care of this additional change possibly?
Yes.
Was that city manager said yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the little screen, so I was looking at Director Leinhardt now, okay. Good, um, and then the, we talked a little bit about response times. The effect of the response times, but if we close it just, it'd be just north of the parking lot. Um, and so that we can come off of 522 up 101st, ours would be able to go both east and west into the two parking lots behind the businesses, is that correct?
Yes.
So that is, that is a possible thoroughfare, okay. Um, and then if we did close it there from those back alley, I call them the parking lots from there. Would there be an opportunity to have addition, there would be additional seating that we could have out front of that business, out front of Hop and Hound, that would allow them to increase the ser, their services?
I'm sorry, I missed that one more time, please.
So if we blocked it, um, where we're talking about blocking it, what to put the barricade there, would they be able to put tables out in front of Hop and Hound to where they could actually service more people?
That, that would be the intent, that's correct. The fire, the fire chief is also going to join the meeting, he has some feedback and some information that he thinks that it's important for the council to hear. So please continue your questions, I just wanted to let the council know that.
Okay, great. Um, and then would there, if that section is closed off between there and Sherwin-Williams and the whole intersection, would that open it up for potential to have a food truck or two park in there and service as well?
It could, that's a whole nother issue. So one of the challenges with food trucks is it actually takes, it's business that takes away from our brick and mortar businesses who have been struggling through the COVID-19 closures. So it, it might bring more people to the downtown, but it also might take, they might come in and purchase food to go or, or sit in one of the outdoor restaurants, the brick and mortar restaurants. It might take away business, so that's a, that's a little bit of a contentious issue between the businesses and, and food trucks. So that would be something, that's sort of a whole nother layer of community engagement and discussion with the businesses and, and permitting where those trucks would go and that they safely can get in and out. Because if you have ecology blocks, that's it, they're not, they're not moving to get trucks in and out. So that would be something that, that to me would be, would need to be discussed at another time, but we're not prepared to respond to those questions. It looks like the city attorney also has something to add to.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to let everyone know that the fire chief is going to be calling in. So if the city clerk could unmute the caller when we see the call in number, that I believe is Chief Crone. Uh, great, thank you. And the last question I had is with the addition, the added closure area. Being that we're in phase two now, would any of the other businesses that are in that area be able to take advantage of it besides the restaurant businesses?
They could, we haven't had any other restaurant, any other businesses other than the restaurants apply for a permit or use of public property, the public right of way. But they certainly could, a permit would be required, no fee would be charged, just like the restaurants. And, and they could have some sort of sidewalk sale or, or merchandising booth, so they could, yes.
Great, thank you so much, City Manager, that was fabulous and Director Leinhardt. Chief Crone, is that you on the line?
Yes.
Chief Crone, would you like to?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, would you like to provide some, some responses or some feedback for the council with regards to this topic?
Yes, if I may, real quick, um, I'm, I'm really concerned about closing 101st on a semi-permanent basis like we're doing Main Street. Primarily, if, if you look at a map, what's happening now to that block, if we've closed Main Street, we're, we're at, we're, we're denying access or immediate access to the fronts of those businesses, which we can work around uh, because we have the access to the rear. If you cut off 101st there, the Hound, according to that parking lot, that only leaves 102nd to get to the, essentially that whole block. One access to get in behind that block in case of a fire or something and I'm, I'm just not comfortable. This was like a, you know, one-off, you know, one day thing, we could, we could live with that, but we're talking clear till, was that Labor Day? And, and I'm just, I'm very concerned about that, on a long-term hard closure like that. Um, cutting through to, to the, to the highway, that's important as well, but I'm, I'm just concerned about those buildings, access to those buildings on Main Street. That was it.
Thank you for the clarification, I know you had shared both with me, I'm sorry that I didn't articulate the, the access to the buildings more specifically, I really appreciate you calling in.
No problem, glad I got, got you.
Councilmember Agnew?
Well, now that the chief stole my thunder, I would, I too was very concerned about, we don't have the, what's called the A-side of the structure right now and that's the business end of the structure. The only side that they have access to is the C-side. Uh, a lot of those are two stories. Uh, you got a fire up in the first floor, they're going to have to go through the fire to try to knock it down and they have limited access. I, I think 101st and moving Main down are wonderful ideas, I think logistically, they're a nightmare. Uh, you know, and that's just the side I'm looking at, but I wouldn't be in favor of it at all.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, um, something the chief said is that he would only have access to the rear of the building through 102nd. Um, and it was under my, I was under the impression that we were talking about making sure that we have that on 101st coming from 522. And, and closed it after that parking lot so that we still have access to those. Is, is that what we've been talking about?
Chief, are you still there?
Yeah, um, the, the drawing I saw, if I was reading it correctly, it was, the closure was from Main Street South on 101st.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing that, that we've been talking about doing is just closing it down to the, into the Hop and Hound so that you'd still have all that access from 101st.
Okay, I, I guess I'd have to see that, so you're saying we would, we would have 101st clear through, maybe like the east?
Not clear through, up from 522. Um, so we would close 101st from, as I understand what we've been talking about, 183rd, down to just the end of the building by Hop and Hound. So you've still got access to the rear of both sides of the street, but you'd have to access it through 522.
Okay, well, that, that's problematic because the, the, the apparatus that'd be accessing that probably would be engine 42 coming from the north side. So they'd have to go around, it's, it's just, it's not ideal. There is some way to, you know, to, to close one side of the street, I know that's a weird deal, but Edmonds is trying some funky stuff like that too, I'm not in favor of that. I'm just, I'm just really concerned over, for a very long-term closure. um, Edmonds is trying some funky stuff like that too. I'm not in favor of that. I'm just, I'm just really concerned over, for a very long-term closure like this. Um, it's, it's, it's concerning.
If there were a way we could do a barricade that were um maybe not quite an ecology block, but still something that like, you know, took a few people to move. Um, and we were able to maintain emergency access to that, is that something, I guess that's a question for everybody, if, if that would be feasible, like keep one side of the street, you know, enough so that a fire truck could get through there and then have a barrier that's not quite as permanent?
Uh, that would be, that'd be much better.
Well, then, 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 then we have a police issue. So um hard barricades have become really important with regards to any sort of outdoor activities on streets because unfortunately, people do bad things with cars. And so safety is, is one of our top priorities and, and there really aren't, um, a hard barricade is a hard barricade. And, and so in the event of an emergency, um, to, to move something, right, so the ecology blocks are not movable without equipment. And sort of anything in between, one, we don't have those things. We'd have to figure out what those might be. And then we'd have to put in place a, a strategy and a plan of what, what, how would that, what, what emergency activity would occur? So if there is an emergency, who's going to come and move those semi-permanent barricades? That's another huge undertaking. We wouldn't be prepared to do that at this time.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Um. I'm not sure um Hoppin Hound would want to put somebody's life and uh building structure on the line. We really want it, we really want to make this work for them. Um, because it could be a lot, a lot of fun. However, we have that one fire, that one accident. And then we're all going to, it, it's all on our heads. Um, and I'm also concerned about running the, if you get on 101st and you run it all the way down to 10183rd, you've blocked another driveway for that parking strip and that gets off of, I keep calling it Parker Paints. And so thank you, Councilmember McNeil for clarifying that. Um, Sherwin Williams, I had to send it work there. So at Sherwin Williams, there's another exit that comes on and off onto 101st. I don't think we want to block that because there's a lot of cars that are coming out of licensing and the businesses there. It gets a lot of traffic. So in my mind, just block all of 101st should stop before that at the other end of Sherwin Williams. The other alternative, which doesn't help Hoppin Hound, is to just block, keep 101st open and then block the rest of Main Street down to the end of the, you know, where the driveway starts at the end, where Sherwin Williams is. So there's just another little small plaza for people to gather. It doesn't help Sherwin, uh, Hoppin Hound who wants to be able to eat right off of there. However, is it worth the risk? Um, I don't know. I don't have an easy answer for it. I don't know what everyone else's thoughts are.
Councilmember Duer?
Thanks, Mayor. I feel like maybe I'm dense, but I don't quite understand the problem with closing 101st to the driveway for the parking behind. Because if the truck can come up to there, they have access. I mean, it doesn't change what's already happened on Main Street and there's a, there is, would it block the access to the parking behind the Hanan Building? Because then they have this sort of access that we have on Main Street, which is from behind in the parking lot. So I'm a little, and then there's access from Main Street further down from Parker Paint um to get behind the other buildings. So I, I feel like I just, I'm not getting it.
I think this is, I mean, I think this is an example why staff normally does agenda bills and is prepared to respond to a lot of these questions. So we're, we're struggling a bit being able to um express ourselves and provide the information and respond to your questions because quite frankly, we haven't, we haven't analyzed this and we're doing the best we can with the knowledge that we have, trying to figure out a, a solution for this. So I just, I don't, I don't have all the answers. I think we're going a lot by gut and experience and just trying to share what, what we think can work and, and what we think there are, where, where we believe there are some challenges to, to, to some of these closures.
Yeah, a map would help. With pictures of where the driveways all are. All right, thanks.
Those would be things we would normally have in a packet for you.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, and I appreciate your comments, City Manager. Yeah. It takes time to study things and understand things uh before we bring them forward. We, we do rely heavily on you guys for your expertise on this. Um, my question actually is similar to uh Councilmember Duer's, and that is if if, and this is just for, for personal knowledge, if we've already closed Main Street down um and did no additional closures, how would you access those buildings along Main Street if there was a fire?
Uh, for the back, from the, yeah, behind, behind the parking lots. Off of 101st to 102nd.
Okay, so from the back of the, the businesses that would be on the south side of Main Street?
Correct. And, and you know, and on the ones on the north side of Main Street too, we have to get on the back of those. We, we'd use the same streets to exercise, to get to the back of those buildings as well.
Okay, so if, if there was a, just indulge me this for a second. So if, if there's a fire at, on Main Street, you're going to come up 101st, not 102nd?
Oh, well, well, if there's a fire, we're going to be using both. That's, that's kind of my, my thing is because we're going to have multiple engines, uh ladders coming down there. And so we're going to need as, as much access as we can because if we get, we get one unit that for some reason parks in a wrong spot on 102nd and it blocks the entrance, we're done. We can't get anything in there. Um, and you know, which happens unfortunately. So leaving as, as much um open access as we can to that is beneficial. Now, you know, it, it can be done, sure, uh, but it's just, you know, i, 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 if I, if I had a chance to weigh in, that, that's just saying my piece at this point. Um, I don't, okay, I, I gotta stop. I don't want to get myself, get myself in trouble.
Yeah, no, and, and, and I appreciate your comments, Chief. I am just, for my sake, we received a ton of emails from the community. And I want to have this conversation open, openly with the community being able to hear um how thoughtful and thorough we are being with this discussion. Um, because it does affect businesses within our community, but there's also life and safety online. Um, so it's important for us to at least have the conversation and at least understand what type of impacts we're going to put, not only on businesses, but our public safety. Um, police officers can't get through, fire can't get through if there's an issue and, and you can't get there fast enough. You know, we talked about response times yesterday. So um, I'm merely asking the questions um publicly so people can understand why the decision, the, whatever decision we make tonight, we're making that decision based on information that we're receiving from, you know, you and the city manager and Director Leinhart. Um, so I, I guess to me, it sounds like any closure along 101st um with the current closure along Main Street is a direct effect on you being able to access the businesses along the south side of Main Street between 101st and 102nd is what I'm hearing.
Um. Correct.
And it could potentially be a life safety issue.
Um, yes.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. I, um, I just wanted to reiterate that I guess I don't understand what the issue is with access from 101st to the parking lot. If we leave from 101st to the parking lot completely open. Um, I mean, for sure, an improperly parked car could get in the way, but that's the case if 101st isn't closed as well. Um, I mean, it looks to me like the, the cost is the time it takes to drive around the block because we're not actually doing anything in terms of blocking access from 101st to the parking lot.
So I, I think what happens with public safety is we look at things from a what's possible, not what's probable. And so what if there was, there was an incident in one of those buildings that somehow also had an impact on 522? And so the ability of an engine to be able to access. So, so when fire looks at accessibility, they look at how many from, from what, from which, how many different angles can they access a scene? And so I think the concern is if something happened on 522 or there was some blockage on 522 and they would have to come around and they're basically not able to get into the, the lot from the access by Hoppin Hound. So Main Street's closed, so you've already limited the entire front portion. If potentially something happened there that they couldn't access 101st, you're limiting the access to um just the 102nd. So whereas normally you've had three access points and now we've taken away one and we're down to two and we can live with that. The concern now is what happens if we lose one of those access points and you only have one? Again, I think what the fire chief is trying to do is share with you um all the information that we have and, and we look at unfortunately sometimes worst-case scenarios because that's what happens in the world. And so we just want the council to understand, these are some of our concerns. Again, it's, it's, you know, it's a council decision. We're just trying very quickly in, in, you know, short period of time to provide you with information that, that, that we are aware of based on our expertise and our experience.
Understood. Um. So basically, it's a matter of getting to 101st, not access to the actual parking lot in the back of the building.
Well, yeah, it's, it's both. Um, and, and uh, the city manager touched on it. This is, it's challenging to do this on the fly and, and I apologize and I don't want to get overstep my bounds or anything. I'm, I'm, I, I really want to resolve this. Uh, that's, that's good for everybody. Um, and without being able to speak to the Public Works Director or the police right now, uh, one option that would work for me is speaking strictly from fire. I'm on the fly, uh, you can shoot me down. Um, I would not be opposed to like a one-way thing on 101st, or if you close that off so it's a southbound direction, only allow us to get in access one way. And you could, you could open up that northbound uh lane to, to whatever you wanted to do. It's not great. I'm, I'm not even sure. I can't see Erin if she's yelling at me now or not, but if that's doable. Um, but that would, that would get what I would want to get on my end of things. So I, I'm, I'm, I hope I'm not gumming the works up here, but that's, that's just a thought I had.
Well, but that leaves, you're, you're referring to leaving 101st, half, half of 101st open. And the desire is to include that intersection of 101st and, and Main so that that closure goes from where it is today on Main and 101st, extend that into further down towards Boffaway.
Oh, okay, yeah, that wouldn't work.
Yeah.
No, you're right, correct. It wouldn't. Yeah.
Yeah. Appreciate the creative um thinking though, very much.
So City Manager, I'm kind of seeing two options here. Is that what I'm seeing is, is that there's no expansion or just this little piece of Main Street? Or you send it back to staff and give them the time and come back on July 7th with a actual recommended uh thought-through, developed option?
The, 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 the agenda bills are, are due today for the 7th and it doesn't mean that you know, we couldn't work on it next week, but tomorrow City Hall is closed. It's a, the next Friday is, is 4th of July, so it's a closure. The agenda bill would have to be posted on Thursday. That's just, that is an incredibly fast turnaround time for us to prepare all of that and get it ready for the public. If it's the direction of the council, we'll, we'll certainly do that. Just letting you know the, the challenges. We, we have to respect the furloughs. We, we've asked staff to take a 10% cut in pay and, and therefore City Hall is closed. City buildings are closed for administrative staff and we need to respect that, that they won't be working tomorrow. It gives us basically less than two days to, to put all this together. Again, just wanted you to know our challenges.
Councilmember Agnew?
I, I just want to remind everybody what we're talking about. It, is we're talking about that the, the Fire Department and the Police Department has lost the first access to those buildings. And now there's secondary access is a parking lot. Those rigs are moderately large. We're going to have to serpentine through that lot. It's not going to be an easy feat. So we're restricting a lot of their ability to function as they need to function. Just need to take that into consideration.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I want to make everybody happy on this. Um, I, I think I answered all the emails uh that came in supporting this closure. I, I understand the intent. It would be a lot of fun on more than one night during the summer. Uh, and it would, it would be a great boon to Hoppin Hound to have that there. I don't like the risk that we're putting people at and what we're asking of our first responders. So I guess my question to, to council is, do you have a stomach for, do you see a merit in closing, I mean, people would have to cross an active street, right, 101st? But then there would be another little piece that's blocked off uh by uh the Tea House over to Sherwin Williams and just block that upper piece of that uh Main Street. So there's two little plaza gathering areas. Does the council have stomach for that?
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Um. I actually think that if we're going to do anything further, we need to understand what we're doing. Because we made a decision to clon, close Main Street to begin with to service, to help the businesses that are along Main Street. Um, and what I'm hearing tonight is we created a public safety issue with not being able to get down Main Street. So I'm a little concerned personally that we basically have closed one street off to benefit certain businesses, but we cannot close another street off to benefit other businesses. And I think that this council always thinks about fairness and equity within our entire community. So I personally think that if we're going to do anything further, we need to look at how it's going to help the businesses holistically along Main Street, not just specific businesses.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
So, um, I've listened very carefully to the challenges that we're facing. And I think I would go all the way down Main Street um to 522. I think that's important because we have different restaurants down there that want the same opportunities that we have um upon um with Alexis and the Vine. We also have um the other restaurants on the other end. So I would support that. Somehow. I, 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 I'm concerned about 101st. That's a difficult one for me because that's where you turn off the road, you come through. That's a cutoff. And the parking lot, the parking lot behind all those businesses, that's their access. So I understand what the Hoppin Hound needs, but it, it's difficult for me. I'll go the next block all the way down to 522. That's where I would support.
City Manager?
Um, so what if council, well, you wouldn't have to direct me. So maybe there's an opportunity for us to use the ecology blocks um effectively without impacting traffic. We'd have to take a look at it. But maybe we could convert some of the parking stalls into flex zones for um a couple of the businesses that would like to move more out into the street, keep the street open, but convert some of those, those parking stalls for outdoor dining. And, and we could, we could just work with our businesses. We could see what, what they would need. We could measure the street. We can make sure that, you know, they don't stick out into traffic and gosh forbid somebody drives into one. But using those parking stalls, you'd lose some parking, but you would with a closure anyway. Um, and maybe that could assist with some additional outdoor dining for those businesses.
Councilmember Duer?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh.
I think that is an excellent suggestion. I'd love to see what staff could bring back in regards to opening up some parking spots. Cause I know Hoppin' Hound, they have, also have to deal with the issue of they can't do takeout, right? Cause it's alcohol. But to, to give them a couple of parking spots, maybe for like a tiny beer garden would be, I think, helpful. So I appreciate that recommendation and suggestion.
My suggestion would be that we just do it and not waste, not use staff resources and time on trying to present this to staff, but having you, to council, but having you just trust us to go and work with our businesses and identify some creative solutions for them and use that time with our businesses and to get this done rather than coming back to you.
That works for me.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'm going to use the word genius because I think that is a genius fix. The only, the only caveat I have to it is Hoppin' Hound loves and it's a great thing. They have a food truck that comes in every Friday. So if we could save a couple of spots that would work for a food truck that rolls in? No, she says no. Okay.
Now you're making choices. So the, the place where they park the food truck would be the place that we would look at, at cordoning off for the ecology blocks. But again, I think this is a great discussion with, the businesses know what they need, right? So, so we have tools and we have resources that we can, we can work with the businesses. Let's talk to them. I, I think our intents are very good, but they know what they need. And so let us, let us have that conversation and come up with some solutions.
I agree. That's the best plan. See, see what's going to work with them one-on-one.
And the genius is Director Lenhart.
Okay. Okay, we have more than one genius in, in City Hall. Thank you.
Council member McAuliffe.
I just want to say thank you so much, Jennifer, because you are really working with the businesses and you're going to do the best you can. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'm all for whatever you decide is the best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
City manager, I appreciate that idea. Looking at Main Street between one hundred second and one hundred first, it's, it's definitely different than all of the rest of the streets out there. I mean, there aren't driveway accesses. That seemed like the perfect street to cordon off like we have already. Once you get past between one hundred first down to Bothell Way, you get all these accesses and parking lot access. That it, it's just a different animal as well as one hundred first. So I think the, the solution needs to be different than just blocking off from one end to the other. So I do trust our staff to work with the businesses and see what works best for them and add whatever space that we can. All right. So I think you have the direction of the council.
I do. Thank you.
All right. Onto continuation of our 2021, 2022 budget workshop and department presentations.
Do you want to take a break? It's been an hour. Are you okay? I'm okay. I just wanted to ask. And I did that on.
Do we need any breaks or we can wait after the first presentation? All right. Do we have the first presentation ready? Director Kaderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am ready.
All right. Great.
I have been practicing several times while you were talking and trust me, the presentation is just perfect and you probably don't need to see it now. So I saved you all some time. Okay, everyone see that?
We do.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for the time this evening to talk a little bit about one of my favorite subjects, the community development department. So I want to start out telling you a little bit about who we are as community development. We do not function in a silo in our department. Some aspect of all that we do touches at least one other department and we could not do our work without the coordination and cooperation of every other department in the city. So this list has the five divisions in the department as well as an overall that captures some things that maybe overlap several different areas. So a little bit of who we are and how we relate to the community in terms of our name. We're the only department in the city that has community in our name. And the focus is usually on the development aspect of that, but the community is just as important. And what we do is really about building community in various ways. So I want to talk a little bit about that. So when people call or visit City Hall, we greet and assist them with things like business licenses, pet licenses, complaints, utility payments, permit applications, records, requests, complaint, I'm sorry, said complaints once already. We get, sometimes we get more than one complaint. Specific questions and general information. We help the community with permit applications for a wide range of projects, backyard decks, home occupations, multimillion dollar mixed-use projects, educational facilities and tenant improvements for international biotech companies. We ensure that new construction is designed and built to federal and state standards for safety, access and environmental protection. And in addition to community standards for design, site development and land use compatibility. We work with our colleagues in the region, our two counties and neighboring cities to express the policies of city council and advocate for Bothell's interests. We engage the community and facilitate conversations to articulate a vision for Bothell's future. We write and enforce regulations, preserve the community's history and provide input to capital investments, all designed to make the vision a reality. We also engage the community during planning projects and through staffing of the shorelines board, the landmark preservation board and the planning commission. Our department mission statement says in part that we work in collaboration with residents, businesses and colleagues to promote a community that celebrates its history, embraces its present and envisids and envisions its future. We are community development. So I want to highlight just a few of the accomplishments that we've done so far in this biennium. Certainly the first one, you're very familiar with, the Canyon Park subarea plan update. That's been a major effort and we're anticipating completion and adoption this fall with the plan that will maintain that regional growth center designation and grow that economic engine for the next several decades. Affordable housing is another area that's been a high priority for, for the council and for the community. Last year, we were focused a lot on accessory dwelling unit code amendments and making those able to facilitate more accessory dwelling unit development in the city. I think there's more work to do there, but we've got a good start on that. We also started work on a multifamily tax exemption program last year and we've had one briefing with council. We're continuing to work with Arch in getting that program in place and we hope to bring that to you this fall for, for consideration and action at that time. As far as major projects, and there've been a lot of them, you can see the map on the right-hand side. That's, it's a map that's on our website that, that people can look at and you can click on any one of those dots and it'll tell you a little bit about the project. But you can see there's a significant number of projects that are either in review or under construction and scattered all over the city. There's quite a bit going on throughout the city. It's not concentrated in any one area. So just to highlight a few of those in the downtown mixed-use, for example, we've had the Pop and Boulevard Place both open in the last year and a half. We've had some significant subdivision activity in the Fitzgerald subarea. For example, we had one eighty-five lot subdivision that came in under the, the clustered subdivision provision. And that's, I think is just about under construction if it hasn't started already. Town homes have been very popular in terms of residential development. Several projects in the downtown that I'm sure you're aware of, we've also had a project that's under construction in Canyon Park and in North Creek. We've got some significant ones going on around the city. Major tenant improvements. And again, this is some of our significant larger employers in the city and particularly Seattle Genetics and AGC Biologics up in Canyon Park. And then finally, education projects. We've had quite a few of those as well, some on campus, others with the North Shore School District. And one in particular I would highlight is Innovation High School, which is a conversion of an existing office building in Canyon Park that's due to open this fall. Another area that I want to highlight for the council is the customer service and permitting function in the department. In January of 2019, we absorbed the customer service counter that was previously in the finance department. So in addition to taking that and integrating it into our department, we also took that opportunity to do some cross-training between the permit counter staff and the customer service counter staff so that both of those groups can, can function in the others positions when needed to help with fluctuations in workload. And that's been very successful, has really helped because that workload, as you might imagine, can be pretty, pretty heavy at times. Also in January of 2019, we moved to all electronic submittal. So we no longer do paper applications. Everything comes through online and we review those online as well. In the past, we would have large paper rolls of projects, some that thick, and we'd have several copies of those that would get distributed to staff for review and we always had to store those. And it, it took a while to do all that review. So that also helped us when we had to transition during the pandemic and we had to work remotely. Being all electronic really allowed us to make that transition much more quickly with minimal service interruption. And I would echo something that I S Director Sherman said the other night. I would really give kudos to the IS department because they were right there and they, they helped us make that move so that we were, we were able to continue to process applications, accept applications and review those and get permits out during that transition time. So I just want to highlight a couple of things on here. You'll note on the bottom line, the total expenditures overall, we're estimating about a million dollars less in the next biennium. Most of that is in personnel savings. We have four vacant positions or unfunded positions, I should say. We also looked at some reductions in our maintenance and operations and I'll talk a little bit more about that over the next couple of slides. There's any number of things that I would ask the council for, but I really have just one that I wanted to, to bring to your attention that I think is very important to the development of downtown. When the downtown plan was adopted back in 2009, it was under a planned action environmental impact statement. And what that means is that as part of the plan, we already did all of the environmental analysis necessary for any project that wanted to build in the downtown that was within the parameters that were analyzed by that EIS. So that saved any project coming in under that provision of the time and expense of doing their own environmental review. That's a tremendous incentive for downtown development and one that has been, I think, very successful. When we did the review, when we did that analysis, we had to analyze a certain amount of development or anticipate what that would be. So we have so much residential that we've analyzed and so much commercial space that we've analyzed. We are bumping up against the, the maximum threshold that was analyzed for residential development. So what that means is once we hit that threshold, development beyond that would no longer be able to use that environmental impact statement and they would have to do their own, their own environmental review, adding time and expense, taking away that incentive. We could head that off if we were go, if we were to go ahead and do an update to the EIS. It wouldn't be a full EIS. It would just be an update of those things that we need to look at in terms of traffic, utilities, other public facilities and environmental impacts of an increase in the residential threshold that was established before. So that's one request that I would ask the council to give some serious consideration to for the next biennium. So just to talk a little bit more about the budget reductions. As I mentioned, there are four unfunded positions. One of those is an inspector position that was added in this biennium as we saw the, the level of inspection activity going up in 2017, 2018 and was continuing to trend up at that time. We added a fourth inspector. That's a very difficult position in the marketplace to fill and we have had different challenges in, in being able to fill that. So basically we have not been able to, to fill that position during 2019. As it turns out, as we got toward the end of the year, we saw the typical seasonal drop-off in inspections. So we didn't have the same pressing need for that inspector. And also I was, just wanted to make sure that that trend was seasonal. So I, I held off in filling that position and now in retrospect, it turns out that was probably a lucky decision, but the better decision to make given what's happened with the pandemic. So that's a position that would be unfunded. We also had one inspector that was laid off effective June first. And we are able to handle the inspection level right now with the two inspectors that we have. We also have the ability to add, backfill some additional work in inspections from our plan reviewers. So if we need to, we can pull someone off of plan review and have them do those inspections. It's great to have that cross-training and that ability to be that nimble. That does mean however, that that's less time that's being spent on plan review and that could delay the, the review and approval of some projects. So when we move things around, it allows us to, to address certain fluctuations, but there are implications at the other end of that as well. The senior planner position I mentioned, that will become vacant with versus retirement in July. Currently, I think we have built up enough momentum in the projects that are underway that we can finish those by the end of the year. Those are the docket items that I think were the highest priorities for the council. We won't be able to finish all of the docket items that we had identified for this year, but I think we can get to the major ones. What that means though, in the next couple of years is that we've probably limited with, just have the one senior planner, we would be limited to probably just the mandatory items in the docket. The customer service specialist is also a recent layoff, June of, of this year. That was from the general fund. The remaining customer service specialist is funded out of the utilities because most of what they do is related to utility payments and answering questions. Again, this is another example where that cross-training with the permit counter staff as well as other administrative staff that work in the department are able to, to help backfill some of those tasks. But again, it takes it at the expense of another function. The maintenance operation reductions are primarily in our consultant budget. We had monies in there for projects that, that come up. They may be things that are identified by council over the course of the year, or they may be something that comes up, maybe a state mandate without any funding that goes with that, or just other issues that arise that we need to get some outside help on. So we've really put that down to the bare minimum and if there are anything, anything that comes up that needs more funds, we'd have to come back to the council for that. We also took a really hard look at the other line items where we have that discretion and we looked at what our expenses have been the last couple of years and things like supplies and postage, messenger services and those types of things. And we've reduced those to be more in line with our actual expenditures over the last couple of years. So we think we've, we've got enough cushion there that that would still work. The last item is not really a budget reduction, but it's a potential savings. When we added that fourth senior inspector position, we also added another car, a vehicle for that inspector. That's our standard practice because they're spending all their time out in the field. We don't feel we have the need for that vehicle over the next couple of years. So we would offer that backup to the general motor pool, which may then offset the cost of replacing another vehicle in the pool that would be due for, for replacement in this biennium. So a couple of days ago, Finance Director Bothwell talked about revenue estimates. Back in late March and early April, I prepared some revised revenue estimates for 2020 and an initial conservative estimate, I would say for 2021. I'd characterize the estimates as something between an educated guess and a wag because we're, we really don't know what's going to happen in the future and we don't know how long that some of these things that we're having to do are going to last. We don't know what effects those will have on the different sectors that, that are affected by that and how that would play out in terms of development activity. But we are tracking specific permit activity, some good indicators that we think will help us watch for trends as well as compare those with monthly and quarterly data from previous years so we can kind of gauge where we are relative to where we've been in the past. Keeping in mind the last three years, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen were really record years for Bothell in terms of the amount of activity that we've experienced. So again, we don't know what that development activity is going to be going forward, but as we track that information, we'll certainly be factoring that in to our budget discussions and we'll have, we'll have at least two quarters, almost three quarters under our belts by the fall when we come back to you with more detailed information. So finally, I'd like to talk a little bit about some future opportunities. These are things that I think are important for the council to consider. When I started with the city a little over two years ago, I think it was my, one, my third week on the job, we had a workshop with the council, a budget workshop. And one of the things that I talked to the council about at that time was adding a third planner to our long-range planning group. And that was because of the, not only the number of items that were in the docket, those are priorities for the council, but also the types of activities, types of projects that those were and the, the complexity of those that require a, a serious dedication of expertise and time and resources to do those. So we were not able to. So we were not able to accommodate that request, obviously, in this last budget. And now with Bruce leaving, we'll be down to one planner in long range. And that will have an impact certainly on what we're able to do over the next couple of years. One of the things that I think will be most impacted will be the affordable housing implementation. That's a strategy that was adopted by council back in two thousand and eighteen. We'll have to prioritize. We'll see how many mandatory items we have. But that'll be a discussion that we'll have with the council when we bring the docket to you early next year. Unlike other, many other of the functions in community development, long-range planning workload is really not directly related to development activity. So it's really more about the docket and the issues that are coming up that are important for for the council and the community that that you want us to address. The next two items are really closely related and they they have somewhat to do with the long-range planners as well. So the legislature extended the due date for our next major update of Imagine Bothwell Comprehensive Plan. Originally, it was June of two thousand twenty-three. And I was anticipating that we would start that effort probably toward the end of two thousand and twenty-one to really gear up for that and make sure that we had, we had all the work, all the foundation in place that we needed to do that major update and have it ready by June of of twenty-three. So the council, the, excuse me, the legislature extended the deadline for for all of King County and the other four counties and our other three counties in our region to June of of twenty-four. So we got a little more time. And we can start the effort in the next biennium. So that would be January of two thousand and twenty-three. That would give us eighteen months. That's really the minimum time that I would want to do that kind of a major update and the code revisions that would need to go along with that. Now, an important aspect of that, regardless of when we start the process, is really to have a much more robust and consistent community engagement program. This is something that has been brought up by other departments, so this could be part of a of a larger program. It doesn't have to be specific to community development. But it really allows us to build those relationships ahead of time and have discussions about what the key issues are. And there are some serious ones that are that have been evolving and emerging. And there will be others in the next couple of years that we need to talk to the community more about as well. And really to make sure that we're able to reach the historically underrepresented perspectives in the community, be much more proactive, go out and meet with people where they are rather than inviting them to come into City Hall. In my experience, to get really effective community engagement, you need to go where people are. Not everyone is comfortable coming to City Hall. They don't have the time, they don't have the inclination, or frankly, they're just intimidated by a city building. The other item on here is the electronic file storage. As I mentioned previously, we have we're doing all of our work now, all of our plan review and and land use review. Everything is electronic. That means we're saving on physical space. We don't have all of the plans, documents that we have to store going forward. However, the files that we receive are huge files. We have been working with all of the development services staff, including building, fire, land use and public works and our records specialists to try to reduce the amount of of disk storage space that we're using on our current servers. We have actually bumped up against the the maximum there a couple of times now. So we're trying to get more efficient and 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 reduce that amount. That will get us through for a while, but ultimately, we're going to need additional file storage for the the amount of activity that we're going to be seeing on development. So I've tried to anticipate and answer all of your questions, but if you have any others, I would certainly be happy to to try to address those as well. Thank you.
The PM is orange.
Sorry, I had a rogue mouse again. One question and a few comments. One, you're not thinking of retiring before two thousand twenty-three, are you?
No.
Good. We have that on record.
I wasn't thinking about it, but now that you mention it.
I'm just saying, you know, what you're talking about. You 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 brought up, Council had a conversation a few weeks ago about a different context where a neighborhood that is classically kind of, you know, off the radar, I, there's, there's a my pet peeve is invisible, people who feel invisible and neighborhoods can feel invisible. And so I I I, it 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 goes against my grain. I I don't like marginalization. So when you were talking about looking out for historically ignored neighborhoods, I was just like, oh, my goodness, we have got to keep this man. Because that's, that's really important for communities to know that they're not ignored and that they are part of the process. So I really appreciated your comment on that. And then, yeah, and then the other.
I'm sorry, if I could just add something to that. I don't think we ignore them. I think that it it's a matter of we're not able to do enough to make sure that we're we're creating opportunities for them to engage in ways that work for them.
Well, that's, that's true. I I did not imply that they're, that they were being ignored, ignored, but it probably, you know, when you don't talk to somebody and they read in between the lines, I I can see neighborhoods feeling like they're they're being ignored, but but they're not. They're just, you know, there's limitations that the city can do. So I did not mean to imply that that you and your staff were ignoring them. I apologize. And then I went and looked at some of the permits because I had a neighbor complain to me and I'm, and I will, you know, that will lead up to a question here. But I went and looked at the permits that are queued up, and I think I counted at least three projects that have cluster housing in process. At least three.
That sounds about right. Yes, I don't have that on on the tip of my tongue, but I believe that's correct.
I I that just just did my heart so, so much good knowing that cluster, I I can't wait to see this coming. I know one of them was talking about how protecting a swath of of existing trees as part of that open space for the, I just like, yes, that's what we were all working for. So that was really heartening to see. My question to you, and it's not about budget. Well, kind of. I mean, it's about, you know, you, people can go and look at what permits are queued up that the city is going to be looking, looking for. Is there a way to find out if permits have expired? Or or if they're not there, do you just assume that they've expired and somebody's not following through on them?
We we can check and see if something has expired, yes. That's information that's available online.
Is it? I couldn't find it.
If, well, we don't, we don't report it out to say these are permits that have expired, but if someone has a specific permit that they want to check on, they can go to my building permit and look that permit up. And I believe, I'll I'll have to double-check that. I don't want them to speak, but I think that they are able to find out if it's expired.
Okay, that was.
Contact staff and we can check that.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that then. I I was, you know, hoping and maybe that's, you know, someplace for when there's bandwidth to improve on, people can readily do that without having to interfere with a live person who's trying to get other work done. So anyway, but thank you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And we'll miss Bruce so much.
Very much so.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Director Catterman, for that presentation. I, I wanted clarification on is there, is it possible for you to give us a list of what will and will not be completed at the end of this year? And then also a list of those items. You're now saying that the only things we are likely to get finished are the required items on the docket? I assume that means state and federal law type items.
I was referring to state and federal items. What I was, what I was speaking to in terms of that would be the only thing on the docket is if if we have one planner going forward, then for the next biennium, we we may only be able to do the mandatory items. As far as the items for two thousand and nineteen that are on the docket, and yes, I can put together a list for you of what I anticipate will will be finishing. I think there were about a, I want to say about ten or twelve. And I believe we'll be able to finish those by the end of this year with the exception of, I want to say, a couple of them.
Because I want to make a plug that I I don't think we realized as a council that we made a decision when we decided not to open up the downtown plan that we decided not to have any teeth to have a gateway requirement in lots EF and G and lot D. And I think that's really upsetting. And I I want to make sure council realizes that that's what we've done and that we may not get at all what we're looking for on lot D because of that. We need to know and realize that by not opening that up, we left it to chance. Our number one, most important site in the entire city, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we may not get what we want because we made that decision. So we still have hope for lot EF and G if we if we decide to open it up and make some, put some requirements in place. So I just want to make that plug because to me, as an architect, it's a travesty. And I just wanted to make sure everyone on council understands that we made that choice. So what we get is kind of a crapshoot now.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Directors, thank you for your presentation. I had a question on growth, around growth in the in the community and in talking about planning and things like that. So I think you said was it eighty-five, a cluster of eighty-five homes in the Fitzgerald area?
That was one, yes.
Just, just one of the plaits?
Yes.
If if we took a broad look, if you had a crystal ball looking into the future, if you looked at the next five, let's just take the next five years, what do you think the increase in population would be in Bothwell?
Well, that's a really good and interesting question and timely because we just got our estimates from OFM, the Office of Financial Management. They do an annual estimate of population for every city and county in the state based on the amount of development that we've had over the course of the past year. So we provide them with information and then they run their formulas and they come back to us. In two thousand and nineteen, April first, our population estimate from OFM was forty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty. And this year, our estimate is forty-eight thousand four hundred. So we added, it was either seven fifty or two fifty, we added over sixteen hundred people in the last year. So that means if we add that same amount this coming year, we'll be over fifty thousand population as of April of twenty-one. We're also waiting to see what the census tells us. The census typically comes in a little bit higher than what the OFM estimates are. So we may already be over fifty thousand. Over the next five years, again, not knowing what the effect is going to be of the pandemic on migration, population growth and development activity, I would say at that pace, you know, we could easily add seven to eight thousand population over the course of the next, the next five years. And right now, the main areas that we're focusing that growth are downtown and Canyon Park. Although we're seeing it in other parts of the city as well. We're seeing, as you saw from that map, there are dots all over the city. You know, we were seeing significant amount of residential development in the North Creek Business Park, for example. We have one project on the Seattle Times site, the one that includes the major building that's over nine hundred units. And they're, they applied after the pandemic had started. So that's moving forwards. We have the Urbane Village project that's happening up on the the Bothwell Everett Highway. And that's adding a few hundred units. The first phase is done, the second phase is under construction. So we're still seeing a significant amount of development activity. It's just a good question of how long that will be sustained depending on what happens with the economy. But short answer to your question, I'm sorry, giving you more information than you asked than you asked for. But if we maintain this pace, we could easily add seven to eight thousand people, I would say, over the next five years.
And when, and thank you, that was, that wasn't giving me more information than I had asked for, but it's very helpful information. On to the point, would, are we, when we look at our budget, like when we look at a buy-in budget for a two-year period of time, you talk about some of the really good things you've done with implementing the my building permit, which makes us streamlined and more efficient with our time. Do we look at other programs that we can get involved with as a, as a city to help, like you talk about electronic filing, things like that? Are we, are we looking at things that we may need to have in the future? Programs we can put in place that would help with that additional growth?
Are you talking about programs? I guess I'm, I'm not sure what types of programs you're talking about, software programs or?
Yeah. So so for instance, when you implemented my building permit, it it helps streamline the process of permitting, right?
Yes.
There was a time, you know, many, several years ago, we heard about the staff internally was overbooked with all the permits that they were trying to review. And we had, at a point, talked about contracting that stuff out. Are we looking at ensuring that we're we're taking the steps to make sure that we do things proactively with our budget and find opportunities, kind of like IT does, you know? Are we looking at things like that to help planning so that in the future we can, you know, streamline our processes even more to be a more efficient with our time? As I think you're being extremely efficient, but I just want to make sure that we're planning that in the future as well.
Yes, absolutely. My building permit has been in place for a few years, so we've been, we've been trying to use that more effectively using different, different tools that come with that. But we also have some, some issues with software relative to the my building permit and the other software that interacts with in terms of the permitting processing that we do. So we've been working with IS. In fact, we're working on a a conversion right now to a different software that is better integrated with the other software that we have, which should address some of our functionality issues and will help with that. So yes, we're always looking at ways that we can improve on what we have. We also look at what other cities are doing and and try to take ideas from them. And what we found, and this is going to sound immodest, and I don't mean it to because I don't take credit for these things, but a lot of other time, a lot of times, cities, other cities are looking at us for what we do as well. And that always makes me feel good, you know, because we've got some really good creative staff that are always looking at ways to improve what we do.
Well, that's what I was looking to hear you say because that's what I hear, being in the industry of building. People are taking notice of what Bothwell's doing. So I just wanted to commend you for your hard work and effort and everything that you're doing. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm I'm blessed with a phenomenal staff.
So Director Catterman, you were saying that with the single senior planner that you have, you don't know how much you can get past the required items, but you're confident that you can meet all the required items that you have with the current staff?
Based on what I know about so far, yes. But I don't know what other items may be. Should I say foisted upon us in the next, in the next few months? But from what I know at this point, yes, I think we can, we can handle that. One, one of the things that I'm doing is tapping into some of the other planning staff that we have that do the review of land use applications, conditional use permits, plaits, those types of things. So it gets back to what I was talking about before, having some of that cross-training and the ability to be nimble and move resources around. But that, that detracts then from our ability to to do timely review of some other applications. So I have to be very careful how I do that. But I am using, for example, I'm using one of our staff that does the the land use review to work on the Billable Lands Report that is due next year. And that's been a tremendous help because that's taken that, normally Bruce would do that. So that's taken that burden off of Bruce so that he's able to devote almost all of his time exclusively to getting Canyon Park update done.
All right. Thank you for that answer. Excellent presentation, and I'm not seeing any other questions. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So next up, we have parks, but we'll take a break in between that so that Mr. Stroop can get queued up and we'll be back at seven thirty-five. All right, we are back and we have, uh, Parks Director Nick Stroop.
All right. Get my presentation going here. All right, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Great. Right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council. My name is Nick Stroop and I am the Parks and Recreation Director here at the City of Bothell. Tonight I'm here to talk about the budget proposal for Parks and Recreation in two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two. During my presentation, I'll give a brief overview of our department. Talk about some of our accomplishments, discuss our preliminary budget estimate, including reductions while speaking to some of those challenges. That we talk about or the things that we really like to talk about as future opportunities. So I want to start by saying that we have an amazing foundation to work from. You know, it wasn't too long ago that we were here in front of you presenting our final draft of our Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. More commonly referred to as our PROS Plan. This plan outlined our community's desire to take care of what we've got. As well as see our park system grow and thrive in the years to come. And while COVID nineteen has certainly changed the conversation for now. We can't forget how incredible the foundation that we already have here in Bothell's park system. You know, if you look out across the city, you see that we, you'll find four hundred acres of parklands, open space and trails that are open seven days a week. Our park system has nine sports fields, fourteen playgrounds, four picnic shelters. At this golf course, two historic cemeteries and a whole lot more. Our department provides citywide volunteer and special event programming. And is responsible for producing a variety of popular community events. And programs like the Fourth of July Parade, Music in the Park, Safe Halloween on Main Street. Arbor Day and our ever-so-popular pop-up dog park, which by the way, opened up today at three PM down at the park at Bothell Landing. We do all of this right now with our fourteen full-time employees, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So now I want to talk a little bit about some of our accomplishments. Um, one of the things I'm really proud about is our, our PROS Plan. And I'm proud about it for a number of reasons. One, we really had an opportunity to get out and talk with our community. We spent fourteen months doing a ton of public outreach. If you recall, you know, we did a couple of surveys, we did a community survey and we got over twelve hundred responses. That's almost unheard of, to be honest. In the region, we're kind of the envy of the region. When I told that to other directors, they were like. Are you kidding me? I wish we could do that. They're asking us, how do you do that? And we did a dog park survey, we got over fourteen hundred responses. You know, we did a teen survey day, we did three stakeholder sessions. We did multiple meetings in front of our Parks and Recreation Board, as well as in front of the City Council. We did eighteen community meetings at HOAs out in parks. Just doing a lot of different things and we did a ton of online engagement. So I'm really proud of that effort because I really think that we. Were able to engage our community at a level that we've never engaged in before. We also, you know, finished the final purchase on the back nine, we had that five acres and we finished that final purchase and negotiated the easements. For the former Wayne Golf Course. You know, I, I, I say this and I said it at the last time that, that we spoke. Wayne Golf Course has never been more important than it is today. When you see the amount of people that have been going out there during this pandemic crisis. They're going out there because they can actually get outside, they can get some fresh air and they can do it safely, you know, while practicing social distancing. Because it's such a large space and people love it. We also reduced and eliminated our pesticide and herbicide use in parks, which actually speaks to, you know, our environmental goals. We want to create spaces that are safe, where people want to come and they don't have to worry about, you know, chemicals or, or things like that, getting onto their kids or onto their animals. And again, we created the popular pop-up dog park series, which, you know, we had heard from our community, this is something they wanted. We heard from you, this is something that you wanted. And at the time, honestly, we couldn't afford it. We couldn't afford the permanent site, but this was a really good opportunity that we were able to come up with sort of a temporary. It actually works and it brings community together. And again, we produced so many large community events like I spoke about before. So as we look towards two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two, with the reduction of staff and the uncertainty of the future. Our budget focuses in on the basic and essential operations for taking care of what we've got. While pausing or eliminating lines of business that we no longer have staff nor resources to run. And looking at this chart, you'll notice a significant decrease from the current biennium request. This difference can primarily be attributed to reductions in staffing and program expenditure cuts. The proposed budget leaves the planning and grants manager position, as well as the recreation coordinator position, unfilled in the next biennium. The proposal also cuts our seasonal staff down from six down to three. And overall, these cuts. Are about six thousand five hundred hours per year. It's, it's tough. But it's the reality of what we're facing as a community, as a region and as a nation. So like I said before, the budget is a bare-bones budget that focuses on those basic and essential services as we navigate our way through this very difficult time. You know, another area that we kind of talked about was the operating expenditures. You'll, you'll see if we go back. Go back to that chart, you'll see that we actually reduced our operating expenditures by about three hundred thousand dollars. And there's two sort of areas that I just want to briefly tell you on those line item cuts. And that's the recreation program services or professional services. You know, we, over the course of the year, we typically would, uh, contract, uh, up to two hundred classes where we had instructors who would come. They use our facilities and they would, you know, essentially, we would do all the administering of it. But then they would use the facilities and they would get a cut of, of what the, the cost was. So, you know, as we look forward, you know, without having the recreational coordinator position. We're really not going to be able to sort of continue in that model. And, and by that, I mean, we're gonna have to look at more of an enterprise system. And looking at ways to, to rent our space, you know, and allow people to come in and teach those courses, provide those services. And, and still collect some of those rental funds from the facilities that we own. A lot of the classes that we, we offered, frankly, being offered by other organizations as well. So if you looked at like. Zumba, for example, it was being taught at the YMCA. It was being taught, you know, the City of Bothell, there was a number of different resources that people could use. We still have the space, we're gonna look for ways that we can utilize that and program that. But we just don't have the people anymore to run those programs. And then for irrigation, you know, we're looking at browning out areas, um, you know, landscape beds around city facilities. So. Things like city hall, police, court, fire, the operations center. And then some of our non-sports related fields. And those would be, you know, a, a good example of that would be Stipek Park, for example. We use, you know, the front field a little bit for, for some soccer tots, but it's not an organized field. And green grass can brown out and it will come back green, you know, as soon as the rains come back. So. That's an opportunity to do some, some reductions. We have a, a few others as well. So the next slides are those opportunities that we would have included in our budget, you know, if the city's financial outlook was better. If you recall during the, the PROS, um, discussions, we talked a lot about our safety projects. As well as our short-term and our long-term projects. Safety projects included like the, the bridge condition analysis at Wayne. When we purchased Wayne Golf Course, we purchased four bridges. Four bridges are, you know, currently on the Wayne Golf Course to go across the Samamish River. And we simply, we don't know what those conditions are. We purchased, purchased them as is and we didn't have any kind of. Paperwork that went with them. We don't have any reason to believe that there's any imminent danger of them coming down, but we do think it's prudent. To move forward and try to figure out, at least do an engineering analysis. Of the, those structures so that we can make sure that they're safe in the long term. You know, uh, engineering analysis like that for four bridges is likely going to be somewhere around fifty thousand dollars. Um, other safety projects listed in the PROS but not included in this proposal. Are things like the, the wood boardwalk at the park at Bothell Landing. That's that wood boardwalk that's just past the, the playground area, goes out through the wetlands. It's come to the end of its life and, you know, there is going to come a point where we're just gonna have to close it down. Uh, and not, it's not going to be useful anymore. So the short-term and long-term projects, you know, these are the things, the, the short-term in particular. That's like a permanent dog park or shade structures. Um, you know, wayfinding signage, ADA improvements. And inclusive playgrounds. And when I say inclusive playgrounds, one of the things that we really lack. Are, you know, we have fourteen playgrounds, we really lack, you know, spaces where, that really promote play. For children of all abilities. And that's something that's really important as we move forward. When we're looking at replacing a playground, that should be the, at the forefront of our thinking and our planning is. How can we create a space that everyone can use? Not just the, you know, able-bodied children, children with disabilities, how can they use it? The areas that we've done that, Blythe Park is a good example, where we have the swing set out there. And there's some tiles that you can actually get a wheelchair over to. You know, we hear a lot of positive feedback on that, but again, that's only one part of that amenity that they're able to enjoy. So we really need to think about that as we move forward. Looking at some of our long-term projects, that would be like the park acquisition in North Bothell. Master planning for river connectivity. We have all the parks that are along the river. But we need, you know, the money and the time and the effort to kind of put that together and create sort of a master plan for that. And then also talking about the Wayne Golf Course, you know, master planning for that, master planning the trails, master planning what, what we intend to do with that. I always come back to the demolition of eleven structures. So nine of them were purchased with the former Wayne Golf Course. Uh, most of these structures need to come down and if, you know, we're gonna have to face that, that fact. Uh, in the, in the near term. And then also, we have a, a restroom facility up at Penn Park. That has been there since I've been here. It's been closed since I've been here. It needs to come down. It is, it, it's been sitting there for almost thirty years now, unused. And then we also have a house that we purchased when we purchased the North Creek Forest. Again, it's in really poor shape, so, you know, it's likely that we're gonna have to demolish that. One of my biggest concerns, and I know I've heard some other directors talk about it, and I'm guessing Aaron's gonna talk about it next with Public Works. Is the Asset Replacement Fund. So last biennium, I came to you with the fields, uh, North Creek Synthetic Turf Fields, two and four. They were towards the end of their life cycle. And, um, you know, we, we simply, we don't have the money in the asset replacement fund to replace those ball fields. Those are about a nine hundred to a million dollar expenditure for each field to change the, the turf out there. They are coming to the end of their life though. I do believe because we've been super proactive with our maintenance. We've been adding rubber, we've been doing a lot of different things. I do believe that we're gonna be able to get through this next biennium. Without replacing them. But that said, our day of reckoning is coming on the ball fields. And, you know, similar, if you've been over to Woodinville lately, they're over there replacing those right now. So when I talk nine hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, that's with that sort of that rubber infill that is somewhat controversial. That if you start looking at the other infills like work, you know, some other things that are out there, that actually adds costs. So these are things that we're. Really need to take a hard look at. And then our playgrounds, we have fourteen playgrounds. A number of these playgrounds have been on our asset replacement fund. For a long time and they still, they simply. and they still, they simply, we haven't had the, the resources to go ahead and replace them. And then we also have a restroom at Blythe Park. Uh, it's been there for a long time. It's really old and it's coming to the end of its life. So the, the final thing I would say is, you know, the additional staffing needs. I think pre-COVID, you know, the, the plan was we would come to you and at least ask for some additional, maybe seasonal help in the, the operations side of the house because again, when you think of 400 acres and 26 parks and all those things I mentioned, and you're operating seven days a week and sometimes you're operating from six in the morning till 10 at night, that's very difficult with the staffing that we have. And with that reduction of 6,500 hours, it's going to become more difficult as we move forward. Meaning we're going to be reducing our levels of service out in the field. So with that, you know, I just want to end this by saying that, you know, our park system and program have never been more important to the residents of Bothell as they are today. And throughout this pandemic and crisis, we've seen our parks being visited and used at levels we normally only see in the peak of summer. Our parks be, are being used as an important space as well to gather as a community, to have that much needed discussion on the social injustices and the systematic racism that continue to plague our country. So in closing, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about our department, our achievements, our preliminary budget, and finally, some of those opportunities. With that, I look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Yeah, the cuts that we've taken in our parks has, has hurt us all. And I, I know that when this, when we can breathe again, uh, you're a huge priority. So a, a question to ask you. Can Bothell's take funding from a private entity like a company? And I don't know, can they give naming rights or for ball fields, for playgrounds? I mean, is that something that we could look into to see if any businesses want to fund those things?
It's something we definitely can look into. When it comes to the synthetic turf ball fields, those are down in the North Creek Business Park. So we have to understand that we have CCRs down there that we have to follow, follow. So signage and, you know, additional banners, things like that, those are not allowed activities down at those facilities. But that said, you know, there, there definitely, you know, could be some opportunities out there. The challenge sometimes when we partner with other agencies or groups, particularly when it comes to like sports teams, if they throw in a big investment, they expect a big return. Meaning that since, you know, when you think of equity of playing time, equity of fields, you really could lock down a field in that scenario where it would just be one specific sport because that would be the return on their investment.
Right, that ma, that makes sense. So that, that, that is a good word of caution on that. If there was a big company that just wanted to make a donation for asset replacement, does that simplify, you know, like they exist? You know, Seattle has them, why can't Bothell? But, you know, dream big here, that, that, that would be a nice thing if a company had the bandwidth to do that for Bothell and, you know, reach out to the community if it's no problem on our end. It'd be nice to make, do some baby step recoveries here.
Yeah, you know, we, we always hope for angel investors and we, we've had, you know, we've had some good luck. I mean, honestly, we, you know, we, we got a, earlier this year, came before you, we had a donation for, you know, over $60,000 and that, that really came out of, you know, working some relationships and talking to people and, and people that are really genuinely interested in our park system. So, you know, I think there's some opportunities there. I wish there were, you know, some, like I said, angel investor, I, I've seen it before where, um, you know, Edmonds, for example, they have a gentleman who has donated $6 million to their park system. And yeah, $6 million is a huge impact, but those are few and far between in a smaller city.
Right. Well, we just keep our eyes, eyes out for them. So that's good to know. And you guys just stay the course. We got your back as much as we can.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
So, um, Nick, you talked about the teen survey.
Yes.
And, um, what did you learn from that?
You know, the, the teens in general, they, um, one, you know, they said that the music in the park series was really geared towards an older crowd and we agree with that. So, you know, the, the venue there wasn't really something that they would like to participate in. They weren't very interested in gathering spaces, you know, places where they could go and they could, they Pokimane Go, it came up, I was surprised by that, but it came up quite a bit. Um, you know, like places that they could gather and they could hang out. So there are some examples of that, you know, um, over in Kenmore, there's the Hanger and Kirkland has some, a little teen center. There's, there's places like that that are out there, uh, that they were interested in for sure.
Because that's what I hear from our young people today. Still, there's nothing to do about them.
So on a good note, you know, by, you know, um, by your approval, uh, as a council, we added two teen members to our Parks and Rec Board. And we had our first meeting in June, it was last week. And I want to say both of those two gentlemen that we added to our, our team there were outstanding. They are, I mean, they're engaged. They were asking smart questions. They gave me a bunch of homework, but you know, I really appreciated it. So, uh, I think it's, you know, I think we've, we've come a little ways. We've got a long ways to go, but we're making some of those really positive steps.
Good. And I, I appreciate that because that's a voice we have to hear from. And you know that, you're a young, young man as well.
Teens in my house, yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
I don't have a whole lot of questions, but I have some comments. Uh, it, it was a wonderful presentation. I, I don't think we realize how much Wayne gets used. I, I'm fortunate enough to be able to watch a lot of the stuff that goes on there. You know, my wife and I walk there with our dog every day and we talk to people from Redmond and Lake Forest Park. And so it's getting a lot of use from a lot of people uh, that say it's, it's a wonderful place for them to be able to walk. Your staff, although it's been limited, has done excellent job, uh, and we want to commend them uh, for what they're doing. They're keeping it up very well. You know, I think you guys are doing a wonderful job. Uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you. And, and you know, I know other directors have said this and, and I feel this way too. I mean, I, I feel very blessed with the staff that we have. They are extremely passionate. They love what they do and they love this community. So that really, you know, it goes a long ways and even though we, we don't have a lot of resources, we're small, we're scrappy. We have to come up with things. They're very creative and they, they really want to do great things. And so sometimes the challenge is, hey, we, we, we just can't do that anymore. We just don't have those resources. But they want to, they, they absolutely want to and, and they really do love working here.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Nick. Um, it was both inspiring and very disappointing at the same time. Um, I'm wondering if you know of other, or if there might be some process by which we could find some other easy wins like we did with the pop-up dog park. I believe, do we still have a volunteer coordinator?
We do, we do. And actually, one of the things I didn't really touch on, because it was somewhat of a small item, was over the course of this pandemic, I've asked Shelby Crowe to be working a lot on the volunteer program because I do think that's going to be really important as we open things back up. That's one of the things that we've seen in our community is that, you know, people really want to help and they really do care about what we've got out there. So as soon as we can get back to sort of a volunteer program, which is likely phase three, you know, those are things that we're really going to focus on. And part of this budget, if you recall, when we added that position, last time it was at the very end of the process. So we didn't really know what to put aside for, you know, that program. And Shelby's developed, it's a, it's a bare bones budget, but it's something to get us started and sort of like Kickstarter um, that we've added into this or that we'd like to add into this budget.
I mean, it sure feels like there are, there should be opportunities out there. People want to be outdoors. I think people want to support the community. And if we can find worthy projects for them to work on, that also get us a little closer to our goals or make us still feel like we have the ability to, to do something for the parks or expand them or even in small ways. I just think it could be a win all the way around. So, um, I guess I just encourage us to, to be on the lookout for those, um, potential easy wins that we might have.
And those are, those are excellent points. And I do want to point out that we do have some very active groups that are volunteers. You know, we have the, the One Bothell Group. We have the Friends of the North Creek Forest. We have Whale Scouts. Whitney Higginbauer is now on our, our Parks and Recreation Board. She's, she runs the Whale Scout Program and she does some fantastic work. They've already done two projects out at Wayne Golf Course for us. So we have a, a really robust volunteer group, you know, that's out there. But we're also hearing from people that have never volunteered before and they really want to get involved. So, yeah, we want to capture that as we move forward and Shelby's working really hard to chart that path for us.
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity. People are just dying for community. Now, we've been denied it for a few months. So it would be great if we had something really positive come out of this experience and that, and, and one of those things being that we're stronger as a community. So thank you for all you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Had to find my mouse. I just wanted to also, uh, thank Director Stu for the hard work of himself and the staff on everything they do for the parks. I think the opportunity to, for the city, the community to save Wayne, uh, has gone tenfold. I mean, never in a million years would I have thought to see that many people out there. You know, we envisioned it as a park 30 years ago, 35 years ago, when Luis Miller and Larry Phillips of King County uh, put forward that, uh, that the, the, the steps to save the golf course in perpetuity for our community. Um, to look at it today, it's just, it's just amazing. And I would agree with Councilmember Agnew, seeing the, you know, the level of maintenance that you're doing with the budget that you have to do it, uh, is incredible out there. I, I just, I can't tell you, it's, it is a, it is a true joy to see people coming from outside of our community enjoying that park and it's, um, it's special. So hats off to you on that. I would be remiss if I didn't say anything about our sports fields. I, I, you know, it, it is, it is tough. Um, have the opportunity to go out, um, the work that you guys did to get those fields back open for the kids, uh, to see them out there, the smiling faces, even though they're social distanced and separated. Um, just seeing them be active is critical, especially after being cooped up as long as they have been. So for you guys to get those opened up for them, um, the work that you do, keeping those places clean, i- is amazing to see. Um, and I would like to, at some point, um, if city manager and you sit down and, and collaborate on ways that we can find, uh, public-private partnerships, whether it's, um, going out and finding grants or things like that, um, or private businesses to, to donate money, whatever it is, just finding ways, because I think there's an opportunity right now with all that's going on in our country nationally and, and even locally here, uh, that businesses want to help and they, they want to be part of community. I don't necessarily think they need to be putting signs and things like that up, but, uh, just awareness and the fact that they're helping communities and, and, and fostering inclusion and equity within, uh, you, at the youth level, I think would, I think that would be, we could lead the way in that. I think we've talked about, um, the city becoming a steward of leading the way in equity and diversity and things like that. I think that would be a great thing for us to take a lead in. Um, lastly, when it comes to, um, not watering, um, irrigation, saving money on irrigation, I have a concern, um, because I've seen situations like that in the past. And I know, I know that is a, is a big win for us to save money. But my concern would be at what point does it become a fire liability? And, and I don't think we have any type of landscaping stuff that would be that detrimental. But just thinking about that, hearing the chief earlier talking about access to buildings and things like that, it would just be a concern of mine that if we're not watering, you know, grasses and things like that, could fires start? Um, so just being cautious of that, that's all.
So to, to be clear, with the areas we are talking about though, would still be maintained. It would be short. They would be, you know, it wouldn't be sort of the long grasses growing, things like that. We wouldn't just let it go. We definitely would still maintain it, but rounding it out where we can. It doesn't, we still have a lot of, you know, money invested in our irrigation for our ball fields um, because we do need to keep those, uh, up and running and we need to keep those, those, those turfs healthy. I did want to say one other thing. So you'd mentioned that a lot of people come to former Wayne Golf Course. And I was on the phone with the, the Parks and Recreation Director, Community Services Director from the City of Kirkland. And she mentions that she comes over all the time and they have beautiful parks in Kirkland. I mean, they really do. They have amazing parks, but she comes over all the time and just likes to go out into Wayne because she can get lost out there and she can enjoy, kind of get some fresh air. So it was kind of cool to hear that from her, particularly given the park system that she has.
What's ironic about that is they have the old Juanita Golf Course.
Councilmember Thompson.
Hey, Director Stroop. Um, I have a question for you. As we look for some of these kind of easy wins, like Councilmember Doer was mentioning, um, if we have members of the community who have ideas for that, what's the best way for them to get plugged in?
You know, I, I think the best way would be, you know, one, we have a Parks and Recreation Board. It's a good opportunity to engage them in, in some of those ideas. They certainly can always contact me directly and, um, you know, or any of our staff for that matter. They can contact them and, and we can get in touch and, and start talking about that. I love easy wins. I mean, that's, that's what it's all about. That's what the pop-up dog park's all about is that, you know, it's something that we can actually afford to do. And I think as we look forward, you know, particularly in challenging times, it's things like that that really can make a, you kind of get a really big bang for your buck. You know, that's what we should be doing. So folks that have ideas, we welcome those, love to talk to anyone who has ideas like that and see if there's any way we can implement some of those.
Perfect. I talked to a member of the community the other day who's a mountain biker and, um, he was asking, is there anything we can do to add that kind of trail to our park system? And we have a master plan for East Norway Hill Park that's done, that includes trails in the master plan. And like, if we had people that were willing to go out there and build trails in a place that we had master planned to build trails, that seems to me like a pretty easy win. Is that somebody I should put in touch with you?
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, you know, to the extent we can, we, we do have limited resources, but I, I'm more than happy to entertain any kind of conversation like that because the more that we can get our community involved and the more, you know, particularly when it comes to building trails, that's something that there's, there's, there's organizations out there that are really, really good at that and they have great expertise, you know. There's certain things, of course, that we have to follow when we put any kind of public amenity in, but they're very good at what they do. So I'm, I'm more than happy to talk to any of those folks.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your great presentation day. Yeah, it's, it's bittersweet, uh, in these challenging times. So I appreciate everything that you're, you and your staff are still doing to maintain what we have.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, eight, 10. All right. Uh, our next item up is Public Works with Director Aaron Leonhardt. Oh, I see her. Welcome back.
Many thanks. All right, we ready? Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Nice to see you again. So here to present, of course, the Public Works Department budget. So here to present, of course, the Public Works Department Budget, Erin Lenhart, Public Works Director. Always, always chagrin to follow my friend Nick, but that's how, how life goes. So the Public Works Department, so our primary responsibility, and I know you all have heard me talk about this a lot, are, is the city's infrastructure and equipment. So that's kind of our bread and butter and why we're here. So Parks is the Department of Fund. They have some of our infrastructure too, but the rest of it is really in Public Works. So that's our fleet, facilities, the city streets, the water and sewer that's within the Bothel service area and also storm. So I was trying to sort of conjure up how to, how to really explain like our storm system, for example, we have a hundred and thirty-eight miles of storm pipe. So that's essentially between Bothel and Vancouver, B.C. That's a lot, if you think about it. So, and we have over eight thousand catch basins, for example, that we maintain for storm. So we're responsible for the full lifecycle of our utilities. So most of the new infrastructure is driven by land use decisions. So for example, with community development, they're working on, they did the downtown plan before and now they're working on Canyon Park Plan. So as part of that, they identify infrastructure that's needed, both on the public side as well as the private side. So we are responsible for the planning for that, the design and the, and the construction and then the full maintenance and operations throughout its lifecycle. And then when it gets to the end of its useful life, we rinse and repeat. So back at it again. And, and that's both on the public side. So, you know, like planning for road infrastructure, for example. It's also on the private side. So we have Development Review Engineers who review all of the infrastructure that is constructed by private development to make sure that that's adequate for the growth that's coming with a particular development. We also provide other services and programs, so solid waste and recycling, the contract is administered by Public Works staff. We also have sustainability education and engagement. So that's primarily around waste reduction and clean water and water conservation. Admin support, kind of our unsung heroes, the admin team for the Public Works Department processes about five thousand invoices a year. Just all of the purchases and projects and things that we have to do. It takes a lot of, a lot of support from admin folks. We also have utility billing staff. So the city bills customers for water and sewer. We implemented online utility bill pay this year, or last year, into last year. So that has been a huge win for us, just being able to have people pay their bills after years of, of consternation over that. We also have a code compliance officer and this works really closely with the compliance officer in community development, but specifically focuses on utilities and right-of-way issues. So there's about ninety people in the Public Works Department. And I mentioned, we have a lot of, a lot of miles of storm pipes and we also have sewer and water and about three hundred lane miles of roadway that we're responsible for. So it's, it's a lot of, a lot of stuff. But tonight's presentation, I'm going to focus on our general fund areas and fleet and streets. The utility budgets, they, they include conversations about revenue and also capital projects. So we're not quite ready to have the conversation with you yet about the utility side of the house. And we are also doing a COVID revenue study for the utilities to really try to tease out what the impacts of this pandemic are going to be on our utility funds to determine how much we can actually do in the coming years. So it was with quite a bit of agony that I had to reduce the accomplishments down to a, a sort of a palatable number. I wanted to talk about APWA accreditation. So that's the American Public Works Association accreditation. So you heard Chief Suberlich talk quite a bit about how the Police Department is an accredited agency. And your Public Works Department has been pursuing this for a few years and we are really hopeful that by the end of this year or the beginning of next year, at the latest, that we will also become an accredited agency. It's, we're been reviewing our practices and really working to make sure that we're doing things the right way. And accreditation is really the feather in our cap that, that shows that work is done and, and that some objective folks have determined that we are doing best practices. Also really proud of our department's response to COVID. The picture you see here is Donnell, he's one of our custodians and they were on the front line to ensure employee safety through this whole thing and, and our other, our management staff and, and other folks have been working really hard to ensure that staff who do need to continue working are safe. And that's been largely in conjunction with the Safety Manager, Katie Thielen. She's been really great. Also engagement. So a lot of our events and outreach happen in the summertime and spring. So for example, the natural yard care workshops usually happen in the spring. So we couldn't have those this year and we're still kind of struggling to figure out how to still hold that and still engage the community and educate them about clean water and water conservation and, and how to, how to take care of your, your outdoors in very safe fashion. So that's been a little challenging, but staff have been really creative. Our annual sustainomania event, for example, is going to be, it's going to be a virtual event and we're going to do a scavenger hunt. So we're going to have folks that, we're going to have places that we want folks to go and we'll have some prizes that are sustainability-based and that sort of thing. So just some real creativity that I'm really proud of. And also our ability to continue our services. So Director Cotterman spoke earlier about Development Review and how we've managed to continue reviewing permit applications through this. And we've had our inspectors out there ensuring that our environment and our infrastructure is protected and I'm really proud of that. Really proud that we, we worked with the council on getting relief for our water and sewer utility customers during this event. And we could put them on payment programs and suspend our shut-offs and things like that. So I'm really, really proud of that and appreciate council's partnership in that. Also our capital projects. So there is a lot of questions in the beginning about what was an essential project and when they were essential projects, how did we keep them up and running and ensure that both our contractors as well as our staff were going to be safe. So huge, huge effort and will go down in the record books, I think. Recycling and sustainability, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Pollution Prevention Assistance Grant and Program. This program, they've managed to really dovetail together council's goals of sustainability as well as inclusion in the community. So the PPA program, what it is, is we have a consultant who works with businesses who generate small quantities of hazardous waste. So this, this biennium, they're focusing on things like senior care facilities and landscaping businesses. So they're working with them and it's not about enforcement. It's about education and it's about assistance. And a lot of these businesses are run by immigrants and refugees and who don't have English as their first language. So our consultant works closely with an organization called ECOS and they are an environmental consulting organization that specifically works with this community. So we've been able to conduct twenty-one site visits in language. So let's see, twenty-one visits. The languages have been in Korean, Spanish, Vietnamese and Mandarin. So engaging folks who, you know, may come from a place where they don't trust government. It's not just police sometimes that, that people don't trust. It's government in general. And we really want to help people and we can better help them when we speak their language. So I'm really, really proud of that program and it's managed to keep going too. We're trying to figure out how to do virtual visits, but with some of these communities, they don't necessarily have the infrastructure to conduct those. So other, other challenges that have come with COVID, but I just really wanted to tell the council about that because I'm super proud of that program. On the facility side, so Chief Cron the other day mentioned that Public Works is doing the project management for the Safe and Secure Projects. One of the aspects of that that I'm really proud of and that we spoke to the council about previously was the city receives state approval to do progressive design builds. So instead of four or five separate projects that we would have had to do design bid build, we can do this entire thing as one project. So it'll save us time, ultimately it will save us money. And it's just been a real cooperative environment and atmosphere. So I'm really excited about that. Fleet side, we started maintaining our fire apparatus, which Chief mentioned as well. It's, it's, it's been a challenge a little bit, but it's, it's really, it's really nice that being able to do that because then we have a sense of ownership too and we can better serve the fire department. The equipment that came in, there are a lot of issues that needed to be caught up on and remedied that I think without that sense of ownership weren't taken care of. The fleet group has also purchased, on the city's behalf, twenty-five vehicle replacements and purchases. A lot of these end up being public safety. Replace the police vehicles more often than other vehicles in our fleet. And so that ends up being quite a bit of the biennial purchase. Engineering, so we estimate that we'll complete about twenty capital projects in this biennium. One that I'm hugely proud of, that has been a huge money sink for, for many years, is the Latke South Contamination Cleanup. We finally kind of figured out what was going on and worked through the voluntary cleanup program to get that taken care of. The Bothel Landing Pedestrian Bridge. So hopefully you've seen the video of placing the bridge that happened last week and that's really exciting and moving forward with that. We have about ten of those projects for Safe Streets and Sidewalks slash grant projects. So for those of you who don't recall, the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy is really focused primarily on taking care of what we already have. So payment preservation projects as well as safe school walk routes. So the funding that we have in that, that levy helps us leverage grant funding to get some of these projects done. They also completed six utility projects, which some people may be more excited about than, than others. We also have received nine grants for about ten million dollars this biennium. This is just for transportation projects. Four others are pending and a lot of these, so one is the next phase of the North Creek Trail construction. We also have design funding for Bothel Everett Highway funding in there. So this is my favorite picture so far of the bridge. So it shows our twin bridges right now, the, the old bridge and the, the new one right after they placed it last week. All right, so accomplishments for a street. As I mentioned, the Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy is a huge assistance for us. About half of the funds go to street operations. So they did over fifty asphalt patching projects in the last year. Hundred and twenty-one sidewalk repairment placement projects, and that's just through June of this year. So there'll be quite a few more, I would say, by the end of the year. And remember when we used to think that being stuck at home for two weeks was a long time? So February twenty nineteen, we had the cycle of freeze thaw that kept a lot of people housebound and our, our snow response, I'm really proud of, of the team there. You know, we really focus on safety for the public. So we work really closely with police and fire to ensure that they can get where they need to go. We also really focus on just keeping roads open as much as we can. And we have some pretty burly hills and only had to close them on occasion. So it's a really, really great, well-oiled machine that they have going. All right. So now I'm going to start into the, the numbers and I just wanted to just kind of demonstrate why I won't, I won't be generally saying like how many staff are in each budget fund because this shows all the different, the distribution of my salary and benefits, for example. So whenever we look at a particular budget, I can speak to how many people are, you know, the primary frontline workers in a particular area, but there's generally admin folks and management that are spread across a lot of different funds. So we'll end up with a, like for engineering, for example, I think the FTE count ends up being almost twenty-seven when you add up all of the little bits and pieces of people like me. So I'd say that facilities budget is probably one of our most straightforward budgets. This is, we have three building maintenance technicians and three custodians and then a fleet and facilities manager who is, is half this. The twenty-twenty reductions, we had some pro-bail day porters, special needs day porters and a custodian position that we, we eliminated in twenty-twenty. The number that you're seeing on the screen doesn't include that custodian reduction that will bring the personnel costs down to about one point three million, estimated for twenty-one, twenty-two. Recycling and sustainability, this, so this has the part-time sustainability assistant is funded here and about a third of our sustainability and engagement coordinator is funded here. Those positions are, are helped with funding, not just from the general fund, but also from administrative fees that come from our solid waste hauler contract as well as grant funding. We do have a budget request that we'd like council to consider that's associated with this that I'll speak to in a little bit. So the engineering division. So, so this is a lot of people and it from a lot of different areas. So this is our capital engineering team. This is our development review. Engineering and inspection. It's also our transportation folks. So there's, I think, twenty, twenty-three or so people who are almost entirely funded through this. And a lot of the capital engineers are, are project funded. So when we get grants or funding from the utilities, for example, that funding goes towards their, their personnel costs when they're working on those projects. The twenty-twenty reductions we took in, in this fund were the, for this year, Transportation Engineering Technician. And also we eliminated the Administrative Manager position. She was funded twenty percent from the engineering fund. The reductions you see in maintenance and operations, we've reduced our professional services for Development Review, keeping more of that review in-house instead of sending out for peer review. One of the ways we're, we're trying to do that is by perfecting our standards so that there's more information for the development community so they can just kind of plug and play what we need to see as far as our infrastructure. Okay, so the street fund, this is where things start to get squirrely. And you start seeing things that you probably haven't seen in other budgets yet. So the transfers out line item, for example. So transfers out for the street fund, this is funding that comes in as Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy and gets transferred to capital for capital programs associated with that. So payment preservation, safe school walk routes, for example. The twenty-twenty reduction from the street fund was twenty percent again of the Administrative Manager. And I have a budget request for the street fund that I'll be speaking to shortly as well. Okay, finally, last but not least, the Equipment Rental Fund. So again, you see the transfers out number. So the transfers out in this case are transfers of funding that are paid into the Equipment Rental Fund for asset replacement. So So the departments pay into a fund to replace their vehicles eventually on the on the schedule that is determined. And then, as Director Boffel mentioned earlier, our our fleet division works closely with the customers and also with the history of a particular equipment to ensure that just because it's reached its its date, that it's actually in need of replacement or if we can extend that. So the budget requests we have for you. So the sustainability, that pollution prevention assistance consultant. So that is funded with a grant from the State Department of Ecology right now. So the state's biennium runs through the end of June. So we are funded through the end of June 2021 right now. And we would like to continue on with that as long as we get the grants. We wouldn't wouldn't do it if if we don't. And then a big one that we would like council to consider is a requested reduction from the street fund. Right now, this street fund pays almost a million dollars of biennium into the storm water utility. And and this was okay for a while, but we have reduced revenue into the street fund. There historically, or for a while, there was a half a million dollars a year general fund subsidy into the street fund from business license fees. And that's been eliminated. And and so it kind of matches up. So that almost half a million dollars a year would go directly from the street fund into the storm water utility. And there are implications of that. It will impact a bit storm capital in the long run. Also, it will impact rates if those funds aren't going in there. The revenues need to come from somewhere. And it also has a has an influence on Wash Dot, our ability to collect storm funds from Wash Dot. So that's the State Department of Transportation. So by state law, you can't charge Wash Dot for storm fees if you're not charging your own local streets. And so for many years, we continued to do this so that we could collect from Wash Dot. Recently, there was new legislation that made it so that the Wash Dot will only pay what you can identify as direct cost to them. So it has to be project specific to water that comes from their facilities. And it's very, very challenging. We were only able to identify less than $50,000 for this year. And even that they're questioning. So if we can't collect from them anyway, it's it makes it really challenging for us to continue moving this much money from the street fund where it's desperately needed into the storm fund. So future concerns and opportunities. So our street network is our most visible infrastructure. And I think we really have focused needs in our transportation engineering and street area. And that's on the staff side. So staff for planning and community response and that sort of thing. We have a lot of different people in our capital engineering manager. For example, he spends a lot of time working on sound transit and Wash Dot and a lot of other regional transportation projects in addition to running our capital programs. So it's it's takes a lot of staff, a lot of time. And it would be ideal for me and for this organization, I think, to have people who are focused specifically on that. Sidewalk and walkway funding, so we have really limited funding in the levy, which is great, and focused on safe school walk routes. There is such a demand for sidewalks and walkways. We did an inventory of just, you know, the segments missing from major roadways a few years ago. And I think it came back with a $100 million price tag. It's it's just, there's so much need. And there's the limited grant programs are very, very competitive. And so it's really challenging for us. Even more challenging, I would say, local street paving. We have some local streets in our area that are well beyond maintenance. And they really need to be reconstructed. Holly Hills Road, for example, it's in really, really bad shape and it will cost millions of dollars to rebuild it. And we just don't have the funding for it. There's no grant programs for it. The funding in the levy for local streets is for slurry seals and that sort of activity that will actually preserve the roads and help them last longer. We don't have anywhere near the funding necessary for for rebuilds. Canyon Park Subarea Plan Implementation, so great opportunity, really exciting. Canyon Park comes with some challenges for Public Works. For one, the roads and the storm system within the park currently are private and they haven't been very well maintained. So we're having conversations with the business park about what needs to happen in order for the city to take those over. Because as that's developed into a more diverse community with more uses, those roads, at least the major roads should be public. But that's going to be an investment. And also, I think we were, at least I'm concerned a little bit about the the success we had with the downtown plan. I think it's fairly unheard of that an organization particularly of our size would take a plan and within 10 years have built out the majority of it. And we've had a lot of success there. But that also came with a huge price tag. And as Director Boffel talked about, a lot of that debt is associated with the downtown revitalization. And as we look at Canyon Park and what the necessary transportation improvements are to to do to make that come to fruition, there's some concern there. And you know, I think that there's some real grant potential there. Traffic impact fees are certainly a part of the the plan. But it's just that awareness that these plans really drive our work and drive the investment. And it can be, it can be a real challenge. And also regional participation. So it's it's been just great the past, the past few years where council has become really engaged with the transportation regional groups. And we have a lot of, a lot of folks who have participated over the years in order to bring those grant funds to Boffel. We have the sort of the double edged sword of of being in two counties where we have twice as many organizations that we need to pay attention to. But it also gives us opportunity to apply for grants in two different counties. So we've been really successful there, but that requires participation, not only in in applying for those grants and doing excellent applications, but also participating in the advocacy for that funding. And as Director Strew mentioned, Asset Replacement Fund is a is a major concern for me. We do a lot of of work on the front end when we build a new facility to think about how many years different components will last. So from HVAC systems to carpet to furnishing furniture systems. We look at all of that and we map out when they need to be replaced. And if, when we start losing, losing the grip on that replacement cycle, we end up with buildings that don't last as long as they should. So it's it's a, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to figure out how we can fund that in the long term. Also dedicated funding for contamination cleanup. I know, I know, as frustrating it is as it is for council to continue spending millions of dollars on this, you can only, I think, imagine how challenging it is for the Public Works team. We know that this is a huge drain and it's not, there's no funding that is really, you know, fits well for it. So we need to sort of find it where we can. And we pursue grant funding for that. I anticipate that Ecology's grant sources will be harder to come by in the future. They rely on, I believe it's barrel taxes on oil for for those grant funds. So it's it's a real concern as we as we try to finish what what we started over a decade ago. Some some more like, you know, kind of low hanging fruit. Office remodel and expansions for our mechanics and building maintenance folks. We have had the good fortune to expand those teams over the last few years, thanks to council support and staff advocacy, and they're kind of bursting at the seams. Could also use a loader for operations, especially the street crew, helping to do things like loading sand into our trucks when we have to go out and do snow plowing. Another opportunity, and I think you've heard this from several of my colleagues as well, is community engagement. So a lot of the things that we try to engage the community around aren't necessarily the sexy fun things that they come to on their own. They are things that we're trying to change behaviors. And historically, we would place advertisements in the recreation guide, say, next to some, you know, cool class for, you know, kayaking. And it's like, well, did you know, in order to keep this water clean, you really should do these things? So there was a real symbiosis between the recreation classes and some of our programs. And so it's it's challenging and, you know, we just need to try to figure out better ways to reach people. Our our, some of our classes, like the natural yard care workshops are usually really well attended. And that's a really good way to reach the community. But it really needs to be on a broad scale. And it's it's a continued challenge. And I I think a really great opportunity once we can sort of get back to some sort of sense of normal someday. And that's it for me. And I would be, I would be tickled to answer your questions.
Hey, Director Leonhart, we just want to take a five minute break before questions.
Excellent.
So we will be back at 8:48.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. All right, thanks, Director Leonhart, for indulging us with a a break there. No reflection on you or your presentation.
Yeah. Okay.
So, all right, Councilmember Dewar, I think I saw your card before we left. So you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm always shocked by how much Public Works does. The rain just pretty immense. I had a couple of things that I wanted to point out and then ask. So I was really happy to hear about the Pollution Prevention Assistance Program. I hadn't heard about that previously. So how long have we been involved in that program?
We've been involved with the PPA program for quite a few years. We had staff doing the work up until last year when we transitioned it from surface water group to the sustainability area and hired a consultant. And I think having the consultant, because the consultant that we work with actually was the one who started Ecos as an organization. So he knew that that there's a real opportunity there. So so yeah, so I think we made a great decision in transitioning that out of out of staff into somebody who has that expertise.
It seems like a really great program and much needed. So that was. It seems like a really great program and much needed. So that was really interesting to learn. I'm sure I've asked you this before, but I'm going to ask again anyway. What's the, what's the timeline for the pedestrian bridge to open, the new one?
So, well, that's an excellent question. So just heard today that the the old bridge will probably close around the end of July. So we're getting the word out right now, you know, to let people know that they have essentially a month to, to celebrate. Old bridge. And then I have a question into staff about when the new one will be opened. There will be a time when neither one is. But I, I'm thinking it's before the end of the year, but I will definitely get back to council on that.
And will that detour be up the whole time?
Probably.
All the way to the end of the year?
Well, no, I think it depends. I think right now we're saying that it will be up through August. But once they get the major work done on the bridge and once they take the old one down, I think we can probably open up more of the trail. But I'll have to, yeah, I'll get back to council on both of those items.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then this, this eliminating the storm utility charge. So what I'm not understanding is, do, do we know how we're going to backfill that money? Because at some point we have to. Is what I kind of understood you to mean, but I want to make sure that I understand the ramifications of making that change.
It's, it's a combination of things. Frankly, it will be looking at our capital program and probably pushing some projects out a little bit further, probably. And also, we will have to look at rates that we charge to other customers over time. It's, it's not a significant portion of the stormwater rate, but it is on the, on the flip side, it's a significant hit to the street fund.
And then can you tell me how many years we have left on the Safe Streets and Sidewalks levy?
Yes. So it started in 2017 and it's a nine-year levy. So not enough time. I think 2026 is our last year.
Oh, there's still a ways to go. So there's still lots of projects that we can get done. Speaking of which, what's the status of the sidewalk on 188?
They are actively working on that project now. They are starting with things like underground utilities. So they have to put in enormous stormwater vaults. So that will go in sort of early on. Right now I think they're doing water and sewer mains there, but that project is back up and running.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for your presentation and everything you do all year long to keep us running.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCollough.
Thank you. And Erin, I go down 188 every day. That, that is an amazing, amazing challenge for that street. I'm so impressed with what you're doing. But you know what? In the end of the day, it's going to be wonderful for our, for people to be able to walk up and down that street and for our young people from Boffel High School. Also, may I also thank you for the work that you've done on 88th Avenue Northeast. That also is to be commended because I walk here every morning and I'm so glad that you're attentive to that for both Boffel High School and West Hill. So thank you.
Oh, the, the street team is an amazing bunch. I, I tell you, the, the work that they are able to accomplish, it's stunning to me and I will be sure and pass that along. So our pleasure.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Erin, I have known you for a long time. Going back to when the campus advisory task force was first getting going. You were right there and you, and you never cease to amaze me because you're just a woman of many talents and skills. So I appreciate you. I need some more time to kind of understand the storm utility charge. That's a complicated thing. So I, I don't know that it's, I don't know that Boffel, Boffel needs me to fully understand it, but I need me to fully understand it. So I'll probably get in touch with you.
So when we do bring the utility funds back to you in the fall, we'll have more specific conversation about what the impacts are, are, will be on the surface water side. So I think that will be a good opportunity to, and happy to provide additional information in the meantime as well.
Okay, okay. And then the other thing is, you know, everybody has something that they virtue signal on. And at least I'd like to think they do. And, and mine is the stormwater drains. It just seems like there are so many neglected stormwater drains. And I turn into this little crazy old lady. It's like, why don't people clear these out? So I'm busy shoving detritus away because our street cleaning works hard to keep our streets looking nice. But the trees and other plants are very enthusiastic. So anything that Public Works can do is, you know, PSAs on social media to remind Boffel at large on ways that we can take care of Boffel, I would heartily support. So you can nag us all you want.
Excellent. But thank, you all heard that, right?
But, but my thanks to you and everybody because you, you carry a lot on your shoulders and, and we really rely on you whether we acknowledge that or not. So thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Leonhart. Great presentation as always. And yes, parks is near and dear, but we need to get around as well. So hats off to you. I wanted to ask you about the speed, the signs that we put up for, to get people to reduce our speed. I know we, we probably don't have many of those. I don't know how much it costs to put those up. Is there any placeholders for that in our budget? Time to put those up or anything?
Yeah, actually one of the positions we eliminated this year due to COVID and the budget issues was our transportation engineering technician. And that was one of his duties was deployment, particularly of the trailers and the, you know, the signs that we have, the radar sign. So traffic calming activities like that, at least for the time being, are going to be really challenging for us. So now we're going to do what we can. We're going to really just focus on the dramatic safety issues that we have. But it's, it's our transportation area is one of our few completely general fund funded areas in Public Works. And so when we looked at maintaining our, our infrastructure and, and all of that, that position was, was one of the few that we felt we could, at least for a couple of years, do without. So so bad news is not only can we not augment that right now, but we're probably going to actually be stepping back.
Yeah, that's one of the unfortunate things about having budget crisis. Because as COVID has, the pandemic has taken over. People have stayed in place. They've sheltered in place and and the interesting thing is, is the less people that are on the road, the faster people are driving. And so more than ever now, that is slowing people down is more now, needed more now than ever before. And especially since summer's coming and, you know, kids were homeschooled, you know, during the tail end of the school year. Now they're all out. As they start to come out a little bit more and people are still not working as much and then trying to drive faster. You know, I don't know what we can do with that, but I think we should at least be paying attention to it because I think, you know, especially wanting to weigh, we've heard from a couple of people within our community that, you know, 188th, two, two 88th, several roads, people are driving very fast now. So I don't know if there's anything we can do, but I'd like to make sure we take a look at that. Also, the do we paint our own striping or is that done by King County?
So we have a combination. So we don't do any of our own striping. We don't have that capacity. But King County does our paint striping. And then we have, we hired a company to do what we, the buttons that we end up scraping off when we, when we snowplow. So they are replacing those and then they're also doing the oh shoot, does a word ever just escape you? The, the more plastic, like, thank you, Councilmember Thompson. The, like the stop bars and things like that. It's a, it's a more robust material that is somewhere else right now. They are doing both the, the buttons and, and those types of more robust pavement markings.
Thermal plaster.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
There we go. There we go. Big word, big word.
It's a long day.
Yes. So that type of work is, we pretty much contract that out if we, if we do it at all. And then street sweeping, we do that in-house. We have our own street sweeper. And those are part of the asset replacements that you're referring to, correct?
The vehicles, so the sweepers, yes.
Okay. And if we don't replace those when we're supposed to replace them or take care of the asset, can that do damage to our roads as well?
Yes. And that type of equipment, and we take really good care of our equipment, but things like street sweepers and the vector trucks, so the things that suck out the storm drains in the sewers, for example, those have so many moving parts that they, they tend to break down and they, they don't last forever. They're kind of like, you know, fire trucks and things like that, that they, they get a lot of abuse. So, yeah, so it's not only do they not operate as efficiently, but then the repairs are very expensive. And yeah, they can end up doing damage to our other infrastructure along the way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Zornz mentioned things that we all like to virtue signal about. So I would like to ask you some questions about roads.
Excellent.
You mentioned the road up to Hollywood Hill and I don't know if that's a half mile or a mile, but if we have 300 lane miles in Boffel and that little chunk is a couple million dollars. Where in the life cycle are most of our roads? I mean, I obviously don't expect a really specific answer, but like, do we have a lot coming due in the next 10 years or they all new or like where, where are we there?
That is an excellent question that I cannot answer. We have, we do an annual roads report. So each year we do a PCI, so the pavement condition rating on half of the city. On a rolling thing. So every other year, all of our streets, we look at them all. And I can't remember off the top of my head. One of the goals that we had as part of the Safe Streets and Sidewalks levy was to try to aim for a PCI, I believe of 80 on all of our arterial streets and collectors. And we, we are not there. So Boffel is, is a 100-year-old community. And so certain areas are, have the older roads and particularly the roads that we inherited as part of annexations, I would say. Is generally when they were constructed, they weren't at the same standard that the city requires. So like in the King County area that we annex, for example, as we're looking at Canyon Park. So Canyon Park, the roads there were constructed along with the business park. What was that in the 80s probably? So there's a lot of roads that not only are maybe 50 years old, but they also were, were not constructed to the durability that we construct the roads at now. So they just take a beating and they end up looking, you know, like alligators and they get past the point of no return. And then there's just really nothing we can do. There's a lot of roadways, a lot of local streets we have that we continue to try to patch and, you know, it gets to the point where there's no longer any pavement to, to you know, it's just like Sisyphean. So that's a long way to say, I'm not sure, but we have a lot, particularly the local streets that have never been tended to until we got the Safe Streets and Sidewalks levy.
I mean, you know, when we talk about a couple million dollars for say a lane mile, a half mile in either direction, like, I mean, and obviously that's super rough, like but like, can we, like, is there any chance, like, what's going to happen eventually? Like if we have a whole city full of really old roads and we have them that are falling apart and need to get recreated, like, and we can't do anything with that now at the beginning of this, like, what's next?
And I, and the mayor may be able to help me a little bit since this is sort of his area of expertise, but so when we do pavement overlays, for example, so we can do an overlay for pennies on the dollar compared to reconstruction. I think reconstruction, last time I looked at it, it can be like $10 a linear foot. So when we look at roads like Holly Hills, for example, I mean, it would be, I would guess it's probably more than $5 million easily to reconstruct that road. And then, you know, particularly now we require storm drainage, which costs a lot of money and we require sidewalks on our roadways. So all of our standards require those things and the costs just add up and add up. So just the, you know, the improvements. I mean, the bridge at Boffel Landing, for example, I think that's a $3 million exercise in the end, right? So all of these things cost an extraordinary amount of money to do. And yeah, that's what we struggle with as staff because we get a lot of people calling us about the local roads in particular, saying, please, you know, what, what can you do? You know, there's this pothole that keeps appearing and there's just, there's just nothing. There's no money there. So yeah, it's, it's an opportunity.
Perfect. One other question. I, Councilmember McNeil's question addressed part of this, but, you know, we replaced 25 vehicles in the last biennium. Do we know roughly how many we're planning on replacing in the next biennium? And obviously those aren't, aren't all in your department. So this might not be a good question for you.
Yeah, the, I mean, the fleet department, we do review all of them. I think there are very few that we actually put forward to replace in the next biennium. I want to say it's I don't know, maybe even five or 10, I think for the biennium because we went through them with a really fine tooth comb and are working with all the departments to see if they can do without for longer and are trying to be creative about it too. Yeah, I don't know offhand.
Okay. No, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Yeah, we're trying to reduce it down quite a bit. And, you know, some of the vehicles that we purchased in the, this last, or in this current biennium were associated with the Safe and Secure Levy too, because those positions, particularly in police, came with vehicles. So I would guess that probably maybe close to half of those were new vehicles associated with new positions.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, I think all my questions have been answered, but I do have an interesting video that I'll show you later on about your stormwater. My neighbor took it and between my house and my neighbor's house, it looked like we had about 1,000 gallons a minute pumping out. It was fairly impressive. Send it to your
Thanks, Councilman.
Just what you love to see.
I know, I know. Boy, some of those gully washers we've had, you know, I grew up in Arizona where we actually would have thunderstorms like this. And continually surprises me here because we're just not cut out for that much rain in that shorter period.
So thank you for your presentation. Your department is near and dear to my heart. So and one of our council goals is maintaining our infrastructure. So I, I think it is, is very critical to maintain our streets the best that we can. And you say, as you're saying, you know, full depth pavement restoration or replacement is, yeah, it's astronomical. And it's generally only in major capital projects that you ever do those and try and get everything done in one major project. So yeah, I, I appreciate the overlays and everything that our safe streets and sidewalks is doing just to get out into some of those streets that haven't been touched since they've been originally constructed. So, so yeah, so I, I, I think our budget needs to, you know, still maintain a decent level of funding for our maintenance and improvements on our roadways. Because, I mean, that, that ties into everything, our economics, people coming in and spending money and how we get our sales and how we get our sales tax is a big issue there, so. All right, a little WebEx glitch there.
That was exciting.
Nobody's muted.
That's a very good point. No one's muted at this time.
All right. So, with that, I guess that was my cue. So, thank you again for your presentation. And, yeah, we'll continue this discussion as the budget develops. So, City Manager, I think you had some.
Closing thoughts?
Yes.
So, I want to thank the council so much. We've spent almost 12 hours together, over 12 hours together in the last three days. Thank you for your questions. Thank you for your attention. We really appreciate the time and your thoughtfulness and helping us guide, you know, guide us through this process. What I wanted to share was, I have a list that I was listening for priorities. So, a couple of the outcomes from this conversation over the last three nights was to provide policy direction. I figured we'd all be tired by the end of the three nights and so, and some time to process and think about the things that have been shared with you. And so, I've scheduled the policy direction for July 7th as well as the finalization of your goals. So, listening to the conversation that you had on Tuesday, I'll be preparing your goals, proposed goals for your further discussion and approval if you so choose. But I did want to just run through, and this isn't an inclusive list, but it is the list that I have at this time of priorities that I heard at least several of you mention with regards to some of the future opportunities that currently aren't budgeted, but you have an area of interest in and will help me put the budget together over the next couple of months so that we can come to you in September with hopefully a more balanced budget. So, this is, I heard human services, Strategic Diversity Equity and Inclusion Initiative, the administration of NPRSA, Agenda Management System with Online Participation, Community Engagement, Long Range Forecasting Tool, Security Officer for Information Services, Body Cameras, Red Light Cameras, Zone, School Zone Cameras, Community Court, Shared Fire Services, and today I heard Public Private Partnerships. There wasn't much discussion at the end of each of the three presentations about priorities. Again, this isn't the closed list. That's just what I've heard to date. And I'll be presenting that in an agenda bill on July 7th for your further discussion and direction.
And Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Councilmember McNeil.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember McNeil for adjournment. Any discussion? No. All right, I'm seeing all nods, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Great three days and we'll see you back on the 7th.
And happy 4th of July.
Happy 4th.
Oh, yeah.